My favorite part of every meeting. Our Congress City Council meeting to order on February twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five. It's six o'clock. Uh, normally please call row.
Mayor Hendrick.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Stoker.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Conell.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Uh, let's have our invocation as Pastor Jackie Bram here tonight. Chris, would you like to give our invocation? Thank you. Does everybody stand, please?
Dear Father in heaven, you let us see and feel your great goodness toward us. Grant us the inner help to the victorious and the Savior, rejoice in to be by his side with faith, loyalty, and with the strength of soul that that frees us all from burdens by laying them in your hands. Hear us together as we pray. We all ask and long for our our concerns down to the very smallest. We lay in your hands in the in the one great request that your name be glorified on earth as it is in heaven, and we just ask, Father, that all decisions be made through your guidance. And we bless the city, Father, on their coming, everybody that works at this city on their comings and goings, may they be protected by you. We say this in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Sure remain standing. Councilman Vasquez, lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas pledge.
Honor the Texas flag. Allegiance to the unity of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. I believe there's no proclamations for tonight, so I'll ask for citizens' comments on non-agenda items.
Yes, Council, Stephen Ellsworth, keeping chickens in the city. Sir, you have three minutes to to speak.
I promise I won't take any more than three minutes. Um, pleasure to address you this evening. Um, I understand that the issue of keeping chickens in the city limits was considered in early two twenty twenty-three, and it died. I don't know all the reasons for that, but that I would propose that the city council allowed that we change the ordinance to allow citizens to keep chickens within the city limits with certain guidelines and restrictions. First off, limit the number of hens based upon the property size, forbidding the keep of roosters to avoid noise problems, distance to keep chicken coops from neighboring habitations, and regulating the size of the chicken coop for the sake of the chicken's health. Now, um, I would propose that the city, that there be a permit that would have to be issued to those who want to keep chickens. But I would propose that volunteers be selected from those who want to keep chickens, that they would do an inspection of the property with no authority, but just to to those who desire to keep chickens, that these volunteer inspectors would look at it with regard to the the uh new ordinance or whatever it would be called, and and the look out for CDC USDA guidelines with regard to the the health of the chickens. Um, the so the volunteer inspectors would only have the authority to give a recommendation to the city. They would issue a permit, and the permit would be some nominal fee to defray the costs to the city because the animal control already has their hands full. Um, understandably, one of the problems is going to be the concern about bird flu, highly pathogenic avian influenza. I'm a physician here in Odessa. I practiced here for twenty years. I have a master's degree in public health, so I have some expertise. It is my expert opinion that the risk to the citizens of Odessa is minimal, and uh it's a complex issue, but I think that those that the those risks to the general public in in the city of Odessa are are minimal. If you have any further questions or want to discuss that, I've left my phone number and email with the city secretary. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all? Richard, why don't you add that issue to the workshop the next meeting? Would you be so kind as to do that?
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you. All right. Uh, well, now move to our consent agenda. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda? If so, I entertain a motion and a second.
So.
I have a motion by Councilman Thompson and a second by Councilman Conell. Uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Uh, need a motion to spin the rules. I'd like to take an issue out of order. Can I have a motion?
It's a move.
I have a motion by Councilman uh Haney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Thompson. Um, we're going to move uh number thirty on your agenda. Uh, Justin's from out of town. We want a presentation of a hot fund expenditures, and rather than him wait till the end. Oh, he's not here yet, Randy?
See, I told him we wanted him last, so he had to spend the night.
We're gonna have another head in the bed tonight. Thank you. All right, then. I guess we'll.
Well, Mayor, we can take him when he gets here.
He comes here, okay. Randy, would you mind just standing up and raving when he gets here? Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to our regular agenda, item number six, consider revocation of the vehicles given to Ohinaga, Mexico by the city of Odessa. Uh, Mr. Morton.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, of the vehicles that were donated by the council to Ohinaga, Mexico, um, at least three pieces remain here in Odessa, and at they were delivered back to our yard today. And so this action in front of you would, we're asking you to take those vehicles back so we can either put them in the auction or junk them. Uh, and there's here are pictures of the different pieces of equipment. Uh, they're not all vehicles. Uh, this is forklift, this is a two-post lift, and the first picture, if you go back to that, is just a a battery charger. These are the only pieces that remain in Odessa, and so would like to take these pieces back.
Okay. Is there any, besides these three, any left in the state or all the rest in Mexico?
There may be one vehicle down on the border near Presidio, um, but I've made no attempt to go get that one.
Okay. Councils, are there any discussion, any questions? Not an entertaining motion?
Aye, so move that we uh revocate these uh vehicles, this equipment, whatever they are.
Motion by Councilman Vasquez and a second by Councilman Thompson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Go to item number seven. Consider allowing John Harris to look into selling vacant lots owned by the city of Odessa. John, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Um, Mr. Conell brought me this wonderful book of all of our city lots that we own. Um, and with these lots, he wanted to see if there's some we could sell. Um, some of them could have reverter clauses, which means if we sell them, it reverts back to whoever donated them. Some we possibly can sell. Uh, we'll need to do some title searches on them, kind of see where we're at, what we can and can't sell, and what the city would say, no, we want to retain that for future development for this city. And we also had someone ask about one of the drill sites that's close to University Gardens, and um Dan has got me in contact with a real estate area.
What is he? He's a land man, Keith Becker with Steve Postic.
With the land man.
Rocket McNeil Postic. So he he basically, of course, you know, Mayor, goes and checks and sees, and I think one of the things that he was telling us about yesterday, this particular drill site has a reverter clause in it.
It does have a reverter clause, but it reverts back to a HOA that is no longer business, uh, reverts back to University Gardens. At one time, that had an HOA, and across from it, you know, where the racket club was, that was their clubhouse. So the attorneys are trying to look at it and see what we can do, what we can't do, since that, I believe it's an LLC that they had.
Yeah.
To see how that works. I'm just asking permission to move forward to see what we can sell, what we can't sell. We've had other ones ask about some of the drill sites in which it's possible. We we own several, but we don't have the surface rights, which means we could put a park or something on it. We can't sell it for any development, um, and seeing what we can do to get the surface rights. Um, I've dealt with the land man. I've also talked to Mike Withrutt Basin. It can be done. Sometimes it's easy, sometimes it's not, just to move forward to see what we can do on those, because right now, since you own those, we're not making any taxes, and your parks department mows them.
And John, last year, we sold, the city sold University, those lots on University, correct?
Yes, sir.
And they were what, twenty thousand, how many did we sell? Do you remember?
Five, I think.
Five or five.
To Habitat, Habitat.
Yeah, for Habitat, for Humanity, yes.
Twenty thousand or something.
Yes.
If I'm remembering correctly.
Correct. And I mean, like dealing with some of the drill sites, I don't want to spend an spend five hundred thousand dollars on an attorney, and we sell it for four hundred thousand. It's got to make sure that we're using our money wisely, that if it's something easy we can work on and spend a little money, we can. The one on University Gardens that's across from the racket club, if we can do it, they're saying ballpark of about nine thousand dollars in attorney piece. Um, and that's big ballpark. We know how attorneys are, how those prices change.
I'm sure it's righteous work. I don't know.
So I'm just asking permission to move forward because we do have several lots throughout. Um, newer council members, if you do not have this book, I bet Dan can get you one.
I think there's a couple out back back there.
And there's some of these lots, we have sold ones on University. Um, there's some small subdivisions on West Sixteenth. There's one on the south side of town that we own that it's already platted, that's divided into lots. So just asking permission to move forward to see what we can and can't sell.
And of course, Mayor, Council, once John determines what we can sell and what we can't sell, we'll be back again to get your permission, actually list it, because it's not just like you just say, hey, we're gonna sell it. We've actually got to post it, and we like to post it for forty-five days, a notice to sell it and, yeah.
The the way we have to sell city property is we have to have it appraised. We put it on the market for appraised price. Legally, we have to keep it on the market thirty days. I do forty-five days just in case we have any problems, and then whatever offers we get, or if we do get offers, then I bring it to you. Uh, we can accept the highest offer, or you can accept another offer. It's totally up to the council what we do with it to move forward.
So you're looking for us just permission to move forward?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any questions for?
I have a question about something you said with uh regard to the surface rights, that we couldn't sell it for development?
We have to get this, the city will have to get the surface rights on it for us to sell it for development, and some of them could have a reverter clause that says if you try to sell it or no longer use, or it's not for public use, it reverts back to the original owner. Uh, that's what happened to us on the fire station. Um, but.
Yeah, and then they literally had to go see the Smith family and to get those releases. They, so it was just a whole, and they kept coming back, and of course, the other council kept knocking it down, you know, so that they could afford to pay the releases, so it's not as simple as it is, but all we're looking for is just permission to go forward. Any other questions?
I do. I guess overall, we've all driven past the lots that we've collected trash at the other day, and each one of those lots has its own story, but the idea was if you have a residential area and that could be sold to a developer, we're gonna be beautiful just to finish off that that neighborhood. And if you have a space in a commercial district and that it's sellable, it's a doable job, we can go ahead and complete the commercial. The um personally, I would like Parks and Recreation to look at it first and see if if there's a certain area that just doesn't have a park and for the quality of life in that area, so yeah, that would be great for a park.
Yes, sir.
Sell over here, use the money over here to develop the park, but it's just quality of life, and this is a, this is a process that will probably take years, but it at least it's a start, and it's and gives John the authority to um do his thing.
Also, if we sell the different drill sites or whatever, that's a large plot of land, I think we should put a deed restriction that whatever is built there, the homes should be equal value to what's in the neighborhood. Um, I wouldn't want to see, you know, a mobile home park put in the middle of a half million dollar neighborhood.
Right, right.
So that's that's kind of along my question. If if you can't sell it to a developer to build on it, not who's gonna buy it?
No one will buy it. We will have to get the surface rights, or no one will buy it.
Do we have to get Chevron or one of the oil companies to release the surface rights?
Some of them, Chevron, could be Endeavor, it could be different ones, it could be some of the original developers. Um, it could be three or four people. It could be originally ten people owned it, and now their children's, 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 children owned it.
And then kind of along Mr. Conell's point, I'd like to kind of keep an eye on, you know, some of this could be pretty good, I don't know, economic development leverage.
Good point, too, and one of mine, yes.
We've got the ability to do land swap, three eighty agreements, you know, so how to identify the kind of the best use of the land, that would be.
Right.
I will also say there's two, there's six drill sites on UTP, UTPB's property. They were wanting to do an expansion of an area and trying to get surface rights on two of them, and they couldn't get it. So.
All you need is permission to go forward, though, and you'll bring all that back to us.
Yes, sir.
All right, guys, I think it's clear. You entertain a motion? And just for and just for clarification, we're gonna keep all the mineral rights underneath those if we own them.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, any mineral rights we own, we're keeping.
You have that opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Just surface rights. Just surface. Can I move? A motion by Councilwoman Stoker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Conell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's move to item number eight. Consider action for Development Department to move forward and prepare a public notification of hearings to discuss removing mobile and HUD manufactured homes as permitted uses for certain zone restrictions. Jeffrey.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Uh, welcome, Mayor Hareken, council members. So uh, we brought this up at our work session, and so we wanted to move forward tonight and ask your permission to do that for a change to our zoning ordinance regarding mobile and HUD manufactured homes. There we go. Okay, so right now, um, mobile and HUD manufactured homes are in ten different zoning districts, so we would be removing them from eight, which looks like a lot, but most of these, except for that general residence zoning, most of those are commercial or industrial zoning, and so the concern was, I think you've all brought to our attention, the incompatibility, so you could have an auto shop next to a mobile home, a mobile home next to a single-family home, and so this would still allow them in mobile home estate, those are those larger lots, not very common in Odessa, and then the mobile home uh districts. And again, the difference is, um, mobile and manufactured home, a manufactured home was after seventy-six, when the HUD law, before seventy-six was mobile, it's generally the same thing otherwise. So um if someone wanted to rezone their property, they were next to an MH zoning in the future, and maybe they had single family, but there was really nothing around there but just green space, they could apply to rezone, so it's not, it's not just that they're stuck in now in the MH zoning that's there, they could also rezone the property with your permission and get another um zone change for um for mobile homes, so, but this would at least keep keep them out. The ones that are already there, um, that we had given you last week, those that data, existing mobile homes would be allowed to continue. So this is what it is tonight. We, one option was to do the overlay zone, the other option was to do, um, just remove them from those other zoning districts, protect the ones that are already there, and that's option two, that's the one we're going for. Okay, so this is citywide zoning map, um, and we thank Edgar and his team and GIS for for doing some really great work here uh under time constraints as well. So this is the entire zoning map for the city based on the areas that allow mobile homes right now, and then we decided that we would go further and break it down by district just because you're all in different um districts except for Mr. Stoker. Um, so Council District One, the map on the left is the zoning map. Those are all the colored areas there. Those are the areas that um mobile and manufactured homes are permitted by right. So that includes your um mobile home zoning, uh, which is the brown color, and it's hard to see there, and then all the other districts that we would be removing them from that are incompatible. The map on the right um has got all of the um, the number of mobile homes. Like I said, great work, they got all this for us. That's the number of mobile homes that are currently out there in your districts um that are not already allowed in the um mobile home zoning or other areas like single-family that don't allow them anyway. So so if you see two hundred and thirty-six there, some of that could be retail one, some of that could be zoned university, some of that could be zoned heavy commercial. So there are, um, you know, although those numbers look high, then if you added up all the other types of dwelling units and other structures, obviously, and that's the problem. So you've got, you'd still have a presence of them there, but is that really the area we want to grow in um the future? So that's Council District One, that's Mr. Mitchell's district, and then we get into two. So two and four don't have any right now, and that's one of the concerns that we had, that in two and four, in those council districts, um, again, all of those areas with the different colors, that could allow them, so it could open up in the future. So the university or retail one, someone could, in theory, come in and and do that, and it it wasn't always a bad thing, maybe historically, as you have to remember, like post-World War II suburbs, right? Most of our towns grew, and you were either, you know, you could only do this over here, and then you couldn't do over there, and it was kind of hindering business. So a lot of cities started this kind of progressive model where they would say, okay, you can do the most intense and anything less intense in the same district, and I think that might work in those, you know, opportunity zones or those technology zones, those areas that are going to bring in a large amount of tax revenue for us, but in residential areas or in, you know, neighborhood commercial, is it really, do you really want a mobile home next to an auto wrecker? So that's that's kind of the the argument there. Okay, then Council District Three, um, so it's Mr. Vasquez, you can see you have a few in there, and then again, two and four, so uh Mr. Thompson and Mr. Connell's districts um don't have any, but again, there could be the potential for them, and then there's um five, again, mostly residential in that area. So um, we're almost done. Common questions that came up, um, will I have to move my mobile and manufactured home um if I'm not zoned MH and MHE? The answer is no. If it gets partially destroyed under the, that's the second question there, it can be um, it can be rebuilt, so it can be reconstructed, it can be enlarged, it can even be extended with zoning board of adjustment approval, and if it's destroyed by a natural cause like fire, um, you can rebuild it up to sixty percent of its reasonable value, so whatever the current market, you know, what that house and the land would be, um, and we're just talking about improvements, that would probably fall to our our building official to make that decision, most cities I've worked in, but generally speaking, you can, you know, you should be able to rebuild what's there and keep what's there. So we're not taking away anyone's, um, you know, property rights in that respect. Okay, and then the rationale for approval, it's really just three things. So it's removing the incompatibility. Again, auto, think auto body next to manufactured homes, probably not a good idea. Two, it protects the character and the integrity of the neighborhoods, so now in the future, if you're in that mobile home or manufactured home area, you can have more manufactured homes, and if you're single-family, you can have single-family homes in in those neighborhoods. And with our differences, and we've got four different single-family districts, maybe that's good, maybe that's bad, but they're all different lot sizes and shapes, and if that doesn't work, there's still the option to do a PD. So there are different um options, too, if we're looking down the road at more, you know, housing in the in the community. Um, protects the character and integrity of the neighborhoods, now you have, you know, more, you know, I don't mean all the same, but just more uniform in terms of the structure type, uh, and then consistency in the rules. There isn't much difference between a mobile home um dimensions, lot sizes, and single-family unless you're in that estate where it's like eight thousand square feet, but nevertheless, it 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 changes things and then structures and all of that. So so the timeline, if we were to do this and you give us the um okay to move forward, uh, it would just be like any other zoning ordinance with one exception. So we would have the, we would publish the notice in the newspaper. The only difference is because you're, you're not actually making a new zoning district, like a map change, where you would have to include everyone within two hundred feet, um, the only thing you're doing is you're removing um a use from from an existing zoning district, but you're not visually changing anything, so the red's still gonna look red, the blue's still gonna look blue. So that, in that case, we only have to notify um just the the owners affected, so just the the areas that are um that are in those those different colors, but not necessarily the two hundred foot buffer around that. So that'll save us a little bit of money on on printing costs and newspaper as well. Um, so whole process, uh, which should be about um two months, two and a half months, so we would have the uh the P and Z meeting first, and then P and Z would just be a recommendation body, so whether they're in support or not in support, it would still move on, and then you'd have your two um council hearings. So we just wanted permission tonight to uh follow up as we were directed to, and now be able to move forward with the notification letters and, uh, you know, a memo and et cetera, and move it, move it forward to P and Z.
Council, questions?
So this is, we want to move forward to let them know that, especially me, I don't want them in my district.
Well.
I'm not saying don't go while you're going, but we want to grow with homes.
Yeah.
This is what we getting ready to move forward and let everybody know, uh, to if we have, we'll end up having a vote on it.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
But I want to make sure we moving forward that they can understand that we'll have to find, I don't know if it's up to the city, what a designated area for mobile homes, maybe even manufactured homes, but.
Right.
We want to try to make Odessa grow and look a little better.
Absolutely, sure.
Because my biggest problem is, not only do mobile homes completely bring used mobile homes in, they don't look good. I mean, maybe that's what a person can afford, but it doesn't look good, and that's what I want to make sure we moving forward to see if we can move outside the jurisdiction. And I believe Council Haney agreed with that. Am I correct, Council?
Yes, sir.
That's right. This is step one.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, all right.
Sure.
Well, and as as part of that, you know, some of the grant funding we want to seek and and work with is to help people get into homes. So the argument that these are less expensive, I don't think holds water. I think, you know, with the standard they had to be built to today, you can move into a a site-built home.
Right.
Or, you know, we can, we can work on grant funding to do it, so I I think kind of combating that argument's a a good thing.
Any other questions?
Excellent.
Well, I entertain a motion, then.
It's a move.
All right, I have a motion by Councilman Mitchels, is there a second?
Me.
Yes. Mr. Langgraf, come on. If you'll come to dis introduce yourself, and then if you'd be so kind as to sign a card before you leave, we have proof of it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John Langgraf. Um, I'm not here officially representing UTPB or university, but I know they're taking this, proposing to take this out of university zoning. UTPB that we worked on many years ago has a circle of student housing that is manufactured homes, and the way I read that ordinance, if we had a tornado or a fire or something, they couldn't rebuild those or re redo that, and I don't know whether maybe that little particular area needs to be exempt from that. Obviously, UTPB is spending many millions of dollars on student housing, but there is a need for that that one little area, probably.
I'm gonna have someone step forward, Liz is stepping, so I'm gonna have her address that, John.
Okay. Is that located on the school?
Yes, sir. It's it's in the center of campus.
So we're not saying that they cannot, especially if there's a natural disaster, they have all rights to come back and rebuild everything as it was.
I I thought there was a sixty percent.
That is, if there's a fire, they can do the sixty percent, but it's always affords back to um our building official.
Okay.
And on top of that, you know, we have planned development districts, so there's always a way to always put it, but it comes to.
I hear you, Jeffrey, can you put that?
I'm not trying to cause a problem, I just wanted to make sure that you.
That slide back on.
You know.
I did not know that, John, so thank you for your, for letting us know, and I I don't, I think Liz is telling me that it's gonna be an exception. Is that right, Jeffrey? If it's already there?
Yes, so. Yes, so if you're, yeah, if you're reconstruction, um enlarging or extending, you would need to get um ZBA approval, but if it was completely destroyed or demolished, the way the the way the ordinance reads, there's, and there are some conflicting statements, but if you go by the mobile home section of the ordinance, it says that you can't um rebuild it, but if it's if it's partially destroyed, you can with ZBA, or if you want to expand it, you can, so to be honest, there could be an issue with those.
So is that because, should you change rebuild to replace, because you're not really ever going to rebuild it?
You're you're replacing.
You would replace it.
Yeah, and so there's, like I said, there's different things that we can do, right? Um Jeff is in the process of updating our our subdivision ordinance, so that's like something that's going to be clean, we're updating everything, right? So that's where it would get, but let's say hypothetically, something happens in between of all of this. One, it goes to the ZBA board, ZBA board has the ability to be able to pass that. The other thing is that because it, everybody can request for a zone change or for uh a part of the zone change can be a planned development district or designate that specific area to M- uh MH district. It's just the, it might be a little bit of timing, but we're always flexible in in our capacity and still keeping with our regulations of working with them. While we're doing a zone change, we can be also doing permit reviews for construction, so there's, and so it's up to you guys, like, you want us to take, I think, uh university, there's not that many locations on it uh that we have, so if you want to say, okay, no, we want to leave it, there would be three zones that would have it on. We just amend it and and change it to those three zones.
Did you just do a UTPB exception, that's the right word?
So that would now mean that we would be doing um uh overlay on that area, so it would be, I don't, I think we would have to do the overlay and then do the zone change, so it would just put us on pause for a little bit.
The good news is there's not that much blue, like, there's not that much university, so it would be only, most of the university's land is only occupied by UTPB.
Or just for specific use permit for that area.
Yeah.
I mean.
We'll be sensitive, because there'll be, I mean, there could be twenty years, there'll be new council, we're going to be us, so. I want to make sure it's crystal clear to make sure UTPB doesn't lose uh a part of its student housing.
Yeah.
That's good. Twenty years, why wouldn't they build apartments?
We understand the school.
They're building apartments and student housing now, but that that's something that provides a unique place for some students that can't go to other places. And it's been a longstanding tradition, and it's a very small area, and I I was just concerned that a natural disaster, a burn or a fire or something, they couldn't replace it at sixty percent at today's cost.
Before, if that's a concern for them and that's the only law, the parcel that we're looking at, we can always contact them, say, do you want to do, you know, specific use permit for that? So they get, in a way, grandfathered in, you know, and they're, and they have rules and regulations for that, it just means that even though you might say, okay, you guys can move forward with this condition after we, like, speak to uh UTPB, that will come first, then we'll move on to this.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's my question.
Absolutely.
I agree with that.
Yeah, there there are ways to get there and we can do it.
Perfect, that's all we need to hear, we'll take care of UTPB.
Absolutely.
I'm a longhorn.
Probably a falcon.
Falcon, falcons up.
Alright, gentlemen, lift these. Shannon agains, alright, is there a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
I motion, I open the motion.
Alright, Councilman Mitchell makes a motion for allow the development board to move forward, is there a second? Second by Councilman Haney, uh any other discussion, if not, hold the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you everyone for your comments. I won't wait till number, I won't wait till, yeah, right before public hearing, hold one second, please. Uh let's go to number nine, consider awarding automotive tires to Forest Brothers, Virginia.
There you are.
Council, Mayor, Mr. Morton, um we would like for you to consider awarding tw- uh twelve-month contract to furnish um tires and deliver the automotive from to Forest Brothers.
Gentlemen, any discussion?
We have all of our Ts crossed and Is dotted on this one.
Yes, sir. We had our tire tech, he was part of the bid process, and so, yes, sir, we have it all together.
That was a great question.
Yeah, no, they're all.
We're sensitive to that.
Yeah, very.
Alright, Council of Nine, entertain a motion.
Still move?
Alright, a motion by Councilman Thompson approved, second by Councilman Stoker, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion's unanimous.
Thank you.
Alright, item number ten, consider change order to Darrington Plan improvements, Alex.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh the Utilities Department is here to ask for your consideration and approval for a change order to the current contract for the Bob Darrington Water Reclamation Plant improvements. Uh we currently have triune construction working at the Darrington on replacing fencing, safety railings and making improvements to piping and pumping at the existing grit removal system and other areas within the plant. Uh increasing tri and scoop, scope would include the installation of a ten-inch plug valve for the contact basin number two drain, this drain holds about five million gallons a day. Currently, we have a plug valve that is damaged, broken open. So we currently have a plug that's in there that we have to air up every day, have someone come by and plug it up. So pretty much what this does is it allows us to remove sludge from the contact basin and put it back into the aeration basins, which currently, right now, we're not able to do because the valve is broken, so. Due to the valve being broken, we're not able to remove the sludge, which is affecting our water quality for the effluent to Pioneer and to the draw. So we need to get this fixed and changed out, and due to having this contractor already out there, they can provide us um the work, so we're asking um your guys' consideration and approval to, for uh the change order of a hundred and six thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. Uh the funds are already allocated within our water, uh wastewater, um repair and replacement budget.
Okay, thank you, Alex, is there questions, gentlemen?
Still move.
Got a motion about. Guys of Canal, there's a second by Councilman Mitchell, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
I understand we're going to table number eleven, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any motion for that?
Yes.
We can motion, some move. Mr. uh Councilman Stoker makes a motion to table number eleven, is there a second?
Second.
Your second, alright, by Councilman Haney, uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passed unanimously. Uh number twelve, consider the purchase of new fleet vehicles for street division of Public Works, Joe Tucker.
Good evening. What I'm asking for tonight is uh purchase of a water truck and two F-three-fifty work trucks for a street department. Uh these are new vehicles, they're not replacements. We did budget them and this year's money in there, the money funds are available. We've gone out for bids, we'd like to use Bruckner's for the water truck for a hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. And uh we talked to Sewell Ford, would they have the F-three-fifties in stock, so we can get those immediately, and those are sixty-seven thousand, five dollars apiece.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
He said you have the money?
Yes, sir.
Tell him to budget his budget.
It's in my budget. Thank you for that, thank you for budgeting that for us.
And I thank you for buying local.
Sure.
Appreciate that.
We do. I counsel any questions? Alright, entertain a motion.
Still move.
Motion by Councilman Thompson, second by Councilman uh Haney, um all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion's unanimous. Now, we previously had a uh motion to spend the rules and go out of order, we had in a number agenda, item thirty-one, I believe, discuss and consider all of Odessa, oops, here it's been thirty-one. Discuss and consider all Sebo Odessa. Oh, thirty, here it is. Review of presentation of hot fund expenditure procedures, Justin, Miss Bragel? Bragel, come to the top, sir. Nice to meet you, thanks for coming to Odessa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Justin Bragel, I am general counsel and legislative director for the Texas Hotel and Lodging Association. Thanks for inviting us to Odessa this evening, we've been bouncing around the Permian all day and it's good to be here tonight. Um I'm here to talk about hotel occupancy taxes. Uh I'm going to, in a short amount of time, uh talk about what the state law is when it comes to expending hotel tax revenues and answer any questions you may have, I'm not going to be here all night, of course, you've got a long agenda. We're also available for follow-up, committee work, whatever it is you all need, we're here to help, we've been working with the City of Odessa for decades and will continue to do so. Uh so, we do a lot of these seminars, this is my third for today. Um we talk about hotel taxes quite a bit because there's oftentimes confusion amongst what the laws are that govern the expenditure of hotel occupancy taxes, but let's start with an even more basic thing. What's a hotel? Well, for purposes of taxes, a hotel is a building rented out for overnight accommodations for less than thirty days. So of course, we're talking about traditional hotels, um your Marriott's, your Hilton's, you know, all of the hotel brands, which you typically go and stay in and know for known for for years. Um but it's more than that too, it's short-term rentals, in addition to that, it's cabins, beach houses if we're by the coast, lake houses if we're by a lake, any building rented out for less than thirty days is a quote-unquote hotel for hotel occupancy tax purposes. Hotel taxes differ from from the sales taxes in many ways, but one way is it how you collect those taxes. Unlike sales taxes, you collect your hotel taxes locally and you spend those hotel taxes locally, right? So this is going to differ from your local sales tax component, right, where the comptroller collects that and remits it back to you. Not the case with HOT, you're collecting it locally and you're spending it locally. I know you all had a council agenda item a few nights ago, a few meetings ago, that dealt with some expenditures of hotel tax revenues. When you're evaluating spending that hotel tax revenue, probably the most relevant part of this this portion of the meeting for you all, you are governed by chapter three fifty-one of the Texas Tax Code. And under chapter three fifty-one, every expenditure of local hotel tax revenue must meet a two-part test. The first part of that two-part test is a long sentence, and I'm just apologize for that. Every expenditure must directly promote and enhance tourism and the hotel and convention industry. Alright, every expenditure, not some, not most, legislature didn't give us any discretion here, we've got to follow this two-part test. Every expenditure must directly promote tourism and the hotel and convention industry. What's a direct promotion? Well, as we say a lot, a nexus or a connection between spending that dollar of HOT revenue and tourism and hotel activity, right, so when we go to spend that dollar, we need to have some sort of connection between tourism activity. Maybe it's funding that sporting event that tourists attend, it's funding your destination marketing uh organization so they can advertise and promote the area. It's funding the arts organization so they can bring more arts events and activities to the area, right, but there needs to be a connection between that expenditure and tourism and the hotel industry. Every expenditure must directly promote tourism and the hotel and convention industry. I rarely leave Austin during a legislative session, I am really honored to be here tonight. During legislative session, I'm stuck in Austin and I'm working on hotel tax bills. We work on them on your behalf, we have before, we got you all authority a number of years ago, worked representative Langgraf to get you authority to use hotel tax revenue for sports facilities, right? We're happy to do that again. Every legislative section, I get pulled into meetings with senators and representatives, and I get asked a question. Justin, why are hotels so greedy? And sometimes they put a word before greedy. Why does your industry ask us to maintain this standard that every expenditure directly promote tourism in the hotel and convention industry? The answer to that simple question is a compromise that dates back to nineteen sixty-nine, when the first local hotel tax was enacted for the city of Dallas to build their convention center. Hotel tax rates are high in the state of Texas, I love Texas, I've been here forever. I like to think of Texas as a low-tax state, not so much when I brought my property tax check, but certainly, if I go to stay at a hotel, you will notice that HOT rates range from between thirteen and seventeen and a half percent in the state of Texas. Ooh, it's a high rate, right, more than double the sales tax rate in many cases. Believe it or not, our industry is okay with that, at least largely so. And part of the reason why we're okay with that is because of this two-part test. Every expenditure must directly promote tourism and the hotel and convention industry. The hotel tax is an economic development tax, that money is used locally to promote more tourism and hotel activity. I'm no fool, I know it drives hotel room nights in this community, right? And we know that business activity is going to come regardless of how much we promote Odessa, but that's not what we're after. We're after promoting and enhancing those things that bring people here for leisure travel, for their meetings, to extend their stay, to make Odessa a nicer place to visit, and make Odessa a nicer place to live at the same time, right? So that's why we want to fund things like arts and fund our DMOs fully. Okay, every expenditure must directly promote and enhance tourism, the hotel and convention industry. If we determine that expenditure has that connection between the expenditure and hu- hotel activity, that's great, we passed the first part of the two-part test. Got to get to the second part, though, we've got to fit that category in one of the categories available to us. We'll talk about them briefly. Uh convention centers and visitor information centers, you can use hotel tax revenue for convention centers and visitor information centers. Two different things in one category, right, convention centers are very different from a visitor information center, but they're all in category one. It's category one for a reason, in nineteen sixty-nine, that's what Dallas wanted to do, build the first convention center for the city of Dallas. You can do that, the convention center facility must be owned by the city of Odessa or managed by the city and primarily used for meetings involving tourists. You have a beautiful facility here in Odessa, and you're doing exactly that. You can use hotel tax revenue for just about anything associated with that facility. Staff it, equip it, enlarge it, make it better, improve it, any of those things you can do with hotel tax revenue, right? We love that use of hotel tax revenue, we love that facility, it puts a lot of heads in our beds across the city of Odessa. Visitor information center is also allowable under this category, just a building or a portion of a building that's used to disseminate information for tourists. Fund the building and you can staff the building with hotel tax funds. Category two's easy, you have a big convention, you need to pay people to work that convention to get people registered. That's a registration of convention delegates, and you can use HOT revenue for that. Category three, advertising and promotion. You can advertise and promote Odessa as a tourism destination, and we think that this is probably one of the most use, important uses of hotel tax revenue. We see the most ROI for our industry in how you advertise and promote Odessa as a tourism destination. Everything that Discover Odessa does likely fits within this category, right? They're your branding entity for your your city, they're the voice and face of your community when you are represented on the world stage. It's Discover Odessa that's doing that for you, they're using HOT revenue to do it, and they're doing a damn good job of it, too, I might add. Right, using hotel tax revenue to advertise and promote the area. You can also use hotel tax revenue under this category to fund advertising for other events and activities in the area, so if you have an organizer of an event that comes to you and says, you know, I want some hotel tax revenue to, in order to advertise my event, you can do that under this category. It's advertising and promoting the area as a tourism destination. We do familiarization tours or other types of meetings to bring people out to Odessa to show off our wonderful assets, our buildings, our sports facilities, advertising and promotion. Alright, next category, funding for the arts. You may use hotel tax revenue to fund the arts. And this is such a vital use of hotel tax revenue, you've got a wonderful arts organization in Odessa, world-class arts organization in Odessa, really an envy of the state of Texas. Using hotel tax revenue for arts-related events and activities that are likely attended by tourists and hotel guests. We understand in our industry that it's more than just selling rooms that makes a destination one that somebody wants to come to, right? It's the culture around that as well. Oil and gas drive room nights here. Arts and other types of events make them want to come back, makes them want to bring their family, gives you things to take your family to do and experiences, makes your your culture more rich here, right? And so your arts organization is world-class and they do that, you can use hotel tax revenue for that purpose. There's a cap on this category, it's fifteen percent of your annual HOT revenue. Easy numbers, if you collected a million dollars in hotel tax revenues, you could spend up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the arts. Historical restoration and preservation is your next category, similar to the arts in a lot of ways. You've got historical artifacts, sites and attractions that tourists and hotel guests want to come and visit. Maybe it's a museum, maybe it's a historical marker, maybe it's a building, doesn't matter what it is, as long as it's historical in nature. There's not a definition for that in the code, we're going to follow what's an ordinary and plain meaning for that that term, right? And tourists and hotel guests are likely to come and attend and visit that historical site or attraction. You can use HOT revenue for that historical restoration and preservation. There's a cap on this category, too, fifteen percent, once again, similar to the arts, separate cap, it works in the same way. Sporting events. Well, we really work hard to make sure that communities can use hotel tax revenue for sporting events. We know that, you know, maybe Sundays through Thursdays, business travel is going to drive the majority of your hotel room night sales, but on weekends, it's going to be things like leisure travel, sporting events, those sort of things that are going to put a lot of heads in your hotel room beds and economic. of heads in your hotel room beds and economic activity at your area hotels. You can use HOT revenue to fund the costs associated with hosting a sporting event, provided that the majority of the participants to that sporting event are tourists and provided there's substantial economic activity at area hotels. What are we talking about? Well, we're talking about doing things like maybe paying for team transportation, registration costs, referees or umpires, food and beverage, those costs associated with actually hosting that sporting event. Maybe it's a UIL tournament, right? Maybe it's a marathon, maybe it's a collegiate basketball game, right? You can use hotel tax revenue to attract that event and service that event under this particular category. Sports facilities, this is what we passed for y'all a number of years ago. You can use hotel tax revenue to improve a sports facility. You could have done it already for a city-owned sports facility and what we passed for you a few years ago was if you decide to enter into a partnership with UTPB, you could do a sports facility, improve a sports facility on their land as well. There's a clawback associated with this. You've got to evaluate the amount of HOT revenue spent on the sports facility improvement against hotel taxes generated five years later. Work with you on that. We think it's workable for your particular community. So, if you're ready and when you're ready to spend hotel tax revenue for this particular usage, we're here to help you with that. There's other legislation in this session that's going to be doing the same thing. I'm working with Monahan's right down the road. They've got to build a session that's going to allow them to do something similar. We worked with Pecos on their legislation, something similar for them. Friends over in Midland as well. We work with any of the communities necessary in order to use hotel tax revenue for this use because we recognize that particularly youth and collegiate-level sports activity drives a lot of hotel room nights in your community. All right, just a few more categories. Wayfinding signage, real simple. You want to put up wayfinding signage, you can use HOT revenue to do it. Transportation systems for tourists, that's going to be your last category. You can use hotel tax revenue for a transportation system for tourists. This transportation system must start or end at a hotel and the other destination must be a tourist attraction in or near the municipality. Now, this isn't city bus service. This has got to be something that's utilized primarily for tourists. Can be something that you run on a regular basis or something you stand up on a temporary basis if you've got a particular event or activity where you have a need for transportation for that event or activity. You probably think of maybe some events where that might be necessary, right? Keep people who may have been drinking off the roads, get people in and out more efficiently. You can use hotel tax revenue for that purpose. Okay. You've got a dollar of HOT revenue and you want to spend that dollar. First things first, does it somehow impact tourism and the hotel and convention industry? Is there an economic impact? Two, does it fit within one of these nine categories that I laid out for you today? If it does, you have a lawful use of hotel tax revenue. That's really easy for me to come and talk to you about it. And if you give me a hypothetical, say, "Justin, can we can use hotel tax revenue for this use or that use?" We'll walk through it. We'll figure it out, right, Mr. City Manager or City Attorney? We'll figure it out. We'll get there and I think we can find, even when the gray area is whether you can or cannot use hotel tax revenue for something, the harder thing is what you all do every time you allocate hotel tax revenues. Determine whether or not something is a good use of hotel tax revenue, whether you're not, you're getting a good return on investment, whether or not your policy decisions are consistent with your own goals for how you want to develop the tourism economy further for the city of Odessa. That's always more challenging, right? That's where you're going to have to do a little bit more digging into who's doing the application, what sort of impact they intend to have, what are your goals behind that? What are your questions for me? How can we be of help to you?
So, for example, you said you can use HOT taxes to improve a sports facility.
Yes.
But if you don't have one, how can you guarantee tourism if you don't have a sports facility? Therefore, I would ask, why can't you use it to build a sports facility?
You, some cities can, right? So, some cities can, if they're bracketed into the legislation. They can utilize hotel tax revenue to, well, let me back up just a second.
Are we bracketed, by the way, before you get to that?
You are bracketed to use hotel tax revenue for an existing sports facility, right? In two different ways. You can use hotel tax revenue for an existing sports facility that's owned by the city of Odessa. Two, you can use hotel tax revenue for a sports facility that's on land owned by UTPB. That's the special legislation that's unique to you and to the city of Victoria. And so, that is, you can do that, right? You can use HOT revenue for that purpose. The idea here is you may not have a whole lot of tourism and hotel activity associated with that particular sports venue at the time you embark on those improvements, but five or 15 years later, depending on what bracket we're talking about here, you have to do an analysis to determine what's your level of tourism impact for this particular sports facility. And what we're going to compare here, Mayor, is the amount of hotel tax revenue you expended to improve the sports facility against the amount of hotel revenue generated from events at that facility. We're not comparing one to one. We're comparing one to two or something else, right? We're comparing HOT revenue spent to hotel revenue generated by the facility. That's what enables you to be able to utilize this particular category of funding in order to improve a sports facility. So, you have time after you've done the improvements in order to start attracting those tourists and then other hotel guests to that particular sports event.
But if we don't have one already, but we want to build one because we believe there'll be lots of people coming to tournaments for volleyball, basketball, softball.
Soccer.
Soccer.
Right.
We got like 10 sports can generate at a particular facility we might be wanting to build.
Two things. One, if you want to use your existing HOT tax revenue, HOT revenue for that particular use, we'll need to go to the legislature for some authority. And if you want to do that, let's talk about it. We'll be happy to work with you on it. Two, if you're looking for a tool you already have in your toolbox now, you could do a venue tax under Chapter 334 of the Local Government Code. Any Texas city or county has authority and has had authority since the late 1990s to go to the voters to improve up to an additional 2% hotel occupancy tax for the purpose of constructing a venue. A venue for hotel tax-funded purposes is either a convention center or a sports facility, right? So, if you felt so strongly about this, Mayor, that this is going to be something that's really going to benefit Odessa and you feel like you're going to have the backing of those citizens here in the city of Odessa, and keep in mind, and I fully cognizant of this, these voters are not going to be voting on a tax that they will likely pay very often, right? It's the way hotel taxes work. That's why I lobby the legislature. The, you know, you can use hotel tax, that revenue to build a new sports facility if you would, if you so choose, right? So, you have that tool now. If you're looking for a new tool, Mayor, let's visit and I'm happy to come up with some. We can use examples from other areas of the state of Texas, or if you've got something new that's never been done in the state of Texas, an idea, but you think it'll drive hotel room nights for the city of Odessa, we're all ears and we're going to be at the table. We don't come to any idea from a position of no, or at least we really avoid it. If you've got an idea for use of hotel tax revenue, let's talk about it and see how we can get there and really make this a win-win scenario to bring more people to the area.
We're doing about 9:00 tonight.
I will be, I will be in the, I'll be nearby, I'll be in Midland, but I will stay in Odessa just for you. I'm doing a Midland City Council meeting tomorrow morning, so, or at least a committee meeting. Yeah, so, we're here overnight. So, yes, but if you have any ideas, Mayor, let's visit. I'm, we're all ears and happy to talk with you. And that's why, you know, as I said, we work the legislature, you know, on all of these issues.
Thank you very much.
Sure, of course. What else can we do to help and what other questions do you have?
I would like to have you kind of expand upon what, how can you help us help events kind of qualify those room nights?
Right. Yeah. So, and let me start at the outset and say that if you're doling out hotel tax grants to an applicant, somebody who's applying for hotel tax funds for their event, the onus should absolutely be on the event organizers to prove up their economic impact to you all, right? And I think that's true no matter what. You know, if I come to you and ask for $100, you're going to ask me, "What do you need $100 for, Justin?" Right? And so, you know, it's the same sort of thing. And you're going to want to ask that event organizer to show their level of impact to you. How do they do that? Maybe where you're wanting to go with that question? It's going to depend a little bit on the type of event that we're talking about here. If it's a ticketed event, it'll be relatively easy to track where these individuals are coming from. So, we may or may not know from just that level of data whether or not they're spending a night in a hotel, but at least we should have an idea then, at the bare minimum, as to whether or not they're tourists. A tourist is defined as somebody visiting from another city or another county, right? So, we'll have at least that level of data. A lot of event organizers, and I believe Discover Odessa uses this too, utilizes electronic tools like Placer AI and others to use the technology in our pocket to track where people are coming from. Again, we may not know exactly whether or not those individuals are spending the night at a hotel, but at least we'll have a base level as to whether or not we're getting a lot of people from out of town that are attending that event. We can certainly work with the area hotels to determine whether or not they've picked up any room blocks or any increased activity from their events. Hopefully, those event organizers are also working with the partner hotels in the area to make sure that those hotels are aware of the event and are directing their own visitors who may not be there for that reason, right? Probably not, and if that's the case. But at least directing those hotel guests who may be looking for some entertainment or something to do that this event is occurring, right? So, are they working with those events? That's a question you'd want to ask an applicant for hotel tax funding. If it's an event that has vendors or some other type of people that work the event, are those people staying in an area hotel? Those are room nights, too. We're going to want to track that, right? So, if we're talking about an event, we'll know some of that. At the worst-case scenario, it may just require sending somebody into the crowd with a clipboard to pick a spot number. And look, there's nothing wrong with that either. Hey, where'd you come from? How'd you find out about us? Where are you spending the night tonight? You know, we don't even know exactly where. You spend the night in a hotel, that kind of thing, right? So, those are the questions you're going to want to ask. But the baseline, again, Councilman, is are the people that are applying for the hotel tax funds supplying you with that information? And if they're not supplying you with that information, then I think the next funding cycle, if they're back at the table again, asking for a second round of funding the next year, I think that's something you'll want to question very carefully. Why didn't you provide us? We use, we have sample forms, I think y'all use our sample forms, an application form that asks all these questions. And then also, I'm a big believer in a follow-up form, right? Just because you've given hotel tax funding to an event organizer, that's not the end of the story. It's up to them to prove up exactly how they performed. If I come to you and say, "I'm going to have this wonderful festival and I'm going to get thousands of out-of-town guests to come and attend," and it turns out it's just like a kegger in a field, right, and just me and my buddies drinking beer, you're going to want to need to give that hotel tax money back if you ever gave it to me in the first place, you know? But then secondarily, next year when I ask for more money, the answer's going to be no. And right, you want to follow up with me and find exactly how successful I was when I held my event in your community. So, there's all kinds of ways to work with them. I know, you know, Discover Odessa does a really good job of helping in that regard and they're really pros at it. There are other tools out there as well and we're happy to visit with you about what those might be.
I'd be curious about that because that seems to be the hurdle of tracking that.
Yes.
And not even just for events, but for, you know, the art museum, for the library, for other attractions that would qualify, but how, as a new something to track, it just becomes change, bad.
I agree. Sure, sure. But, you know, for those standalone facilities like that, that's also easy to get over because we could ask the people that are walking through our front doors, "What brought you in? Where are you coming from? Did you spend the night?" You know, and look, maybe the numbers are not as, not as high as we would like if we're the, I don't know, executive director of one of those organizations. That's okay. That's an opportunity for us to do a little bit better and try and work a little bit more closely with our DMO and with, you know, other people in the tourism industry locally to try and increase those numbers, right? And it doesn't necessarily mean no either. For a lot of these categories, really the most of these categories, there's not a hard ROI baked into the statute. And you will see that with additional legislation that we pass. I mean, so, if I write a bill, chances are I'm going to write a bill to have an ROI component in it, but these older categories like historical, arts, even advertising and promotion, there's not a hard ROI component written to the statute. So, it's up to you all as council to set the policy for what level of success you need to see, right? So, arguably, if you have just a few guests staying at a hotel that are offending some arts exhibit, right, that's enough legally. They qualify for hotel tax funds under the tax code, right? End of story. Now, whether or not you want to fund that, that's a different story and there may be a compelling reason to do so. Maybe this is an event that's getting its, you know, start here, there may be other community benefits. There's a million reasons possibly, right? But for the actual law on point, the ROI component is going to be somewhat loose here and give you some flexibility. And that's okay, but from our standpoint, too.
Counselor Stoker, would you mind sharing that example with him that you brought to our attention the other day about on July the 4th when we have a firecracker?
Right. So, you know, the city hosts an event downtown for Fandango, Fourth of July Fandango. We host an event for our Christmas parade that brings tens of thousands of people downtown.
Okay.
And you spoke of our beautiful hotel.
Right.
I was in a conversation with the owner and she said, "I can show the receipts on July 4th or whatever night happens to be around July 4th that the hotel's 100% occupied."
And the restaurant's full.
And, that's my next question. And I can show on July 5th that it's not 100% occupied. So, the question kind of was, as long as we all agree that that event caused the hotel to be 100% occupied.
Right.
It qualifies.
I agree. Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. You know, that's a, that's a very easy example, I think, you know, as to, and again, now maybe the Fandango wasn't the sole reason why a lot of people were there, but maybe it was. Either way, it...
But the flip side, and you spoke of it a little bit, hotel's 100% full, some of those people could have wandered out into Fandango and enjoyed the event.
Absolutely.
And that counts, too.
Absolutely, it does. Absolutely, it does. Yeah, and again, you know, because the idea here, particularly for things like arts-related expenditures and the historical restoration and preservation, you know, what we're really doing with these is we're trying to increase the quality of a visit to Odessa, right? That's really what we're doing. And so, you know, it's that those hard ROI numbers are going to be more difficult to track as a result of that, but that doesn't mean they're not worth undertaking in a lot of cases, right? Particularly if you have a vision for how you want to see the downtown area evolve from a tourist perspective, then, you know, I think that makes a lot of sense. I mean, you think about downtown Waco, Texas, right? 10 years ago, downtown Waco, Texas, nobody would go to downtown Waco, Texas. Now, everybody, every tour bus coming between Austin and, or San Antonio and Dallas is stopping in Waco and a lot of them are spending the night now, right? I've got a board member from Waco. A lot of his business now are those tour buses, people stopping by. But, you know, they built a tourism brand based on some silos, I guess, but they've evolved their downtown around it, right? Downtown Fort Worth, right? Went to law school in Fort Worth, you know, Sundance Square's beautiful, right? It's a good reason to go to downtown Fort Worth and spend the night and people are going It's a good reason to go to downtown Fort Worth and spend the night and people are going to want to, you know, go hopefully spend more time there as a result of how beautiful it is, right? So, you know, for your, if that's your vision for downtown Odessa, you know, I think that makes a lot of sense from a tourism development perspective.
Yeah. My, my second question, you kind of mentioned it, is it only room nights?
It's easy for us to shorthand heads and beds, right? It's a catchy, rhyming thing to say, heads and beds. The, that's not, language isn't in the code. It's economic activity at area hotels, right? And so you have a lot of wonderful restaurants here in Odessa, but in downtown Odessa, in the core, around that convention center, the restaurant that's most consistently open and serves good food consistently is going to be the restaurant in the Marriott Hotel, right? And that's economic, people who go and dine in that restaurant, whether they're locals or visitors, that's economic activity at area hotels. Same thing would happen if you have an arts event that is, where a banquet is catered at the, at the conference center and people come and they don't spend the night, but they're attending that conference, that's economic activity at area hotels as well, right? So we're going to look at that, we're going to count that for purposes of hotel tax funding. And if you're looking at from an ROI perspective, I think you should count that activity as well.
So it doesn't necessarily have to be room nights.
I just had a question. Justin, I think you answered it already, but I think I'll ask it again. Who determines whether the data provided by the, the people that received the funds locally, the council awards $100,000 to a particular event and we, part of the form is, hey, you've got to show some heads and beds or economic development or promotion of tourism. What body decides that that data coming back to the council is good enough or accurate enough?
Ultimately, it's the council that makes that decision. Now, the council may decide to contract some of that obligations out to third parties, right? So you work with the arts organization here in town, just for arts grants is an easy example, right? And so you've given that organization the ability to make some determinations and ultimately report back to you as to how that hotel tax revenue is being spent in that particular category and the effectiveness. But ultimately, you know, use whatever expression you want, you know, it all flows downhill, whatever, it, you know, the buck stops, whatever. It's y'all, right? This is local hotel tax revenue that's expended local in accordance with chapter 351 and we can advise you, your city attorney is going to make, you know, advise you on this, but ultimately it's up to you as to how to use hotel tax revenue in accordance with the law. You report hotel tax revenue to the Texas Comptroller by March 1st of every year. We're getting real close to that date if you haven't done so already, but the comptroller's office is a data collection recipient, right? They're not actually determining whether or not your use of hotel tax revenue is lawful. Attorney's General's office will offer up an advisory opinion if they're asked in the right way for it, but again, that's an advisory opinion. My point being, this ultimately comes back to this particular body to make that determination.
I got one more. So you did mention short-term rentals.
I did.
Collected locally, which I don't, anyway, we're not collecting that. So can we get some help?
Yes. Let's talk about STRs. We could talk about STRs for a long time, we won't. So short-term rentals are, let's start with the basics. Short-term rentals are subject to hotel taxes, full stop, right? Their definition of a hotel under the tax code includes a short-term rental, a building rented for overnight accommodations. It doesn't matter whether we're talking about a hotel or a house or an apartment or a man camp, right? It is, those rentals are subject to occupancy tax, hotel occupancy tax. The challenge, councilman, that you alluded at is in the enforcement. Because this tax is collected locally, you are charged with collecting that hotel tax locally. Now, for a traditional hotel, that's pretty easy, right? My hotels, we want you to know where we are, right? We've got a big sign out front that says Marriott Hilton Holiday Inn, right? We've got a big sign because we want you to be able to find us, right? But short-term rentals are more difficult. Even though they're advertised on platforms like Airbnb and Verbo, you don't know where those properties are actually located until you execute a booking contract with that particular property, right? Now, you may be able to utilize a third party. There's a bunch of them out there that go scrape data and use a bunch of stuff that I don't understand to try and get the actual physical location of the property, but even that's a bit of a guess at times, even if their accuracy rate can be kind of high. It's a challenge for communities to enforce hotel taxes when it comes to STRs. My advice is, you can take this in a couple of different ways. My advice on this would be first to have an ordinance on point that requires even just some basic STR registration. I'm not talking about regulation. I'm not talking about the R-word. I am just talking about having STRs register with the city of Odessa so that you know where they are. This is not just a hotel tax issue, this is a health and human safety issue too, right? So you know where they are, you know that they're operating, but then also you know or your finance department knows whether or not to, to expect a quarterly hotel tax return for them. The Airbnb and Verbo have entered into a settlement agreement with the Texas Comptroller for collection of the state occupancy tax. That settlement agreement does not apply to the local hotel tax. So you're not going to get a lot of help from Verbo or Airbnb right now when it comes to the, that collection, right? Of this, this is very much a local effort dealing with local individual property owners, which is why a lot of cities contract with third parties to try and, you know, automate this collection process. A number of years ago, I think we need to update this, I'm going to talk to my friends at TML about this, we allocated or changed a lot of, let cities allocate a little bit of hotel tax funding for these electronic tax collection systems. I think it's probably time to increase that dollar amount you can spend from your hot on electronic tax collection and we can, you know, explore that a little bit more. You should also know, councilman, you may have heard about this already, I don't know if TML's put it in their, you know, alerts yet. Airbnb has a bill session, they had the same bill last legislative session that refers to accommodations intermediaries is the phrase that they've given themselves, that would take the hotel tax collection for short-term rentals booked through their platforms and run it through the comptroller's office, come under the filed version of the bill, the comptroller would get a 1% finder's fee for that and remit the remaining tax onto the municipality. Now, for you all, that's a huge windfall, right? You're getting 99% of a tax that, if that were to pass, that you wouldn't be getting otherwise. Now, from a hotel industry perspective, we love everything I just said, right? From my, I love that, right? I want more tax compliance. Marriott Hilton, all these, these guys, they should be paying their hotel taxes and if they're not, we've got a problem with that because other folks are doing it correctly then and that's not a level playing field. We would love it to have 100% compliance on transactions booked through VRBO and Airbnb as well, right? We would love that as well. So we love that aspect of the bill. But there was a few other things that we're not so happy with that has to do with some fees that Airbnb charges to people and whether or not those, those service fees would be subject to hotel equity taxes, that if a hotel charged that same fee, we would collect hot on it. They're claiming they don't have to. That's a bit of an issue for us. We're working through it. I don't know if we're going to get there. We didn't get there in 2023. I'd like to get there in 2025. You know, y'all have a lot of, you know, short-term rentals, but I'll tell you, we work with like counties that are on lakes, Leno County, they've got like 2,500 STRs and two employees to deal with it. And those employees are the treasurer and her assistant. She's got other things to work on rather than tracking down STR transactions, right? Um, you know, and they're collecting a million bucks in hotel taxes a year, which is a lot for them, but still, right? That's a, that's a, because we'd like to automate that, you know, or see that get automated. Um, and, you know, we can visit, I should stop talking. We could visit, I could talk forever about this. We should, we can visit more about this, but that's, that's where I think we would like the things, see some things go, but in the meantime, if this bill doesn't pass in particular, it may be time to consider an ordinance.
Well, I introduced Scott to my best friend who's the chief of staff of payments at Airbnb, so.
Fantastic.
We've got something in the works.
All right. That's fantastic. Fantastic. Scott's our CEO, Scott Johnson. Thank you.
Justin, I have one for you.
Yes.
The, you pointed various factors, different outlets where the funds could be used, but I wanted to kind of highlight for the new council too, we have Discover Odessa, we have Randy over there.
Yep.
We have people out there that are working hard to actually do that and bring in tourism.
Yes.
They're, they're a lot of energy and actually they're counting on those funds that we'll disperse later this year.
Yes.
So I'm just speaking up for them too. You know, we just don't want to go, right? We'll spend it all.
Oh, yeah.
We want to be able to reward the entities that are out there working hard.
And have been working hard for you for a long time.
And have earned that.
Yes. Yes.
Hot funds.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, again, so Discover Odessa, their whole mission is to drive more tourism activity to the area. I mean, and not to speak ill of any of the events or other organizations that come to you for hotel tax funding, their primary mission may or may not be tourism activity or is only mission is tourism activity, right? That's all she does. She wakes up and thinks about bringing more people to Odessa. She goes to sleep at night and sleeps.
We want to reward those people.
Yeah. And, and, you know, and Randy, he, he thinks about arts and promoting arts in the area and how that ties into tourism. And so, I mean, this is what they do and so I agree with you, councilman. And this is, I think, from our industry's perspective, nobody does it better.
Yeah. I'd give him his full 15% and his 1% back.
Agreed.
Council, any other questions?
Write that down.
If not, we really appreciate.
Thank you so much.
Fantastic presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Happy to be here. Call us back anytime. It's a real pleasure. Love coming here. Thank you very much, y'all. Appreciate you.
All right. Moving on to agenda items, public hearings. On item number 13, open a public hearing to consider request by Pbar Ranch LLC for an annexation of 24.5 acres of tract of land located in southwest quarter in section 39, block 41, T dash 1 dash 2, TNP Railroad Company Survey, Ector County, Texas. We're now going to open up a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak about this can do so at this time. Elizabeth, you'll come forward. Oh, you know, Elizabeth.
I snuck up on you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, mayor and council. So I came before y'all about a month ago with the petition for the annexations and we're here to proceed. The very first one was presented by LCA. Owner of this property would be Parby Parks Ranch. They are, the acreage is 24.5 acres, a lot that they're trying to, acres that they're trying to annex in. We have already gone to the county, we have their approval on file. They're wanting to zone this as special dwelling districts. At this time, we have gone to the planning and zoning commission that they approved it on February the 6th with a seven to zero vote, so that one passed as well.
Any comments from citizens?
Sorry, I guess I could have done this.
Mr. Langgraff?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't think so.
Well, I've got, I've got one. You said you went to the county?
The county has to do a letter of intent to allow us. We have a, is it an MOU with the county where they have to approve the release of the property, sort of say?
For retail.
For, for retail, for commercial and it's a 50/50, but not on this.
I understand that, but this isn't retail, right?
No, it's not, but we still go to them to, to, just to let them know that we're about to process an annexation.
I didn't know that. I didn't know we had to ask their permission on that kind of a deal, so I caught me off guard.
Any other questions?
Gentlemen, any questions? Yep. All right. So we'll close the public hearing, any discussion by council. See you none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by councilman, seconded by councilman Haney. Excuse me, Canales, excuse me. All right. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Now, item number 14, open a public hearing to consider request by Benton Bowe Companies, PBC, owner of an annexation of 11.425 acre tract of land located in section 27 and 28, block 42, T dash 1 dash S, TNP Railroad Company Survey, Ector County, Texas. Again, we'll open a public hearing to discuss this matter.
All right, thank you. All right, this one was brought to us by Maverick Engineering. The owner of this land is Beaton Bowe Companies. The acreage is 11.425 acres lot. We also went to the county and have that letter of intent from them on file. This would be LC, which is a light commercial property. Once, we also went to PNZ on the, on February the 6th. They were approved with a seven to zero vote on that as well. So at this time, where the staff is recommending to approve the annexation in the draft service agreement.
Thank you. Anyone from the public? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion by council?
So this, this corner property, if I'm not mistaken, is where Occidental is going? That corner?
This is the corner lot of the North Highway 385 and the loop, but I'm not exactly sure what is going.
Just one, yeah, it's just a square.
The square property.
Yeah, I'm thinking Occidental about that. I know they did. John, am I right about that? You got to come up. Mayor's going to shoot me out again.
Mayor recognizes, can you introduce yourself, please, sir?
Hi, I'm Brett Berenger with Beaton Bowe Companies.
Okay.
Uh, we're actually in the works with a convenience store and the progress of this right here, so.
Okay. So that, that's a big, that's a change from what I originally understood. I've called, the mayor recognized John Lang, if you'll come to the dais, please, sir.
Oxy property is, is just south of that.
Okay. So this is north of that, it's, this is actually on the corner.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the Oxy property is south of that.
That's what I needed to know because I knew Oxy had a piece of property. Sorry about that.
It's all right. Any other questions, gentlemen? Not to entertain a motion.
Who's this gentleman?
It's Beaton Bowe.
I was just finna ask where y'all at. I don't know who's y'all.
He's right there, that fellow's sure, you can't miss him.
I know.
All right. Any discussion? Not to entertain a motion.
Hustle move.
Motion by councilman Vasquez, or seconded by councilman Haney. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Item 15, open a public hearing to consider request by Headley Estates LLC and Covington Brothers Properties LLC, owners for the annexation of 12.86 acre tract of land located in section 5, block 41, T dash 1 dash S, TNP RR Company Survey, Ector County, Texas. Let's open a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, you can do so at this time.
All righty. Jesse and I'll be here for a little bit.
Really? We saw that.
Yeah. So this property was, this annexation case was submitted by Maverick Engineering owned by Headley Estates. It is 12.82 acre lot, a tract of land. The proposed zoning would be the residential retail on this one. We went to the county as well. We have that letter of approval from them. We went to the same PNZ meeting on February the 6th with the seven to zero vote as well. So at this time, the staff is recommending an approval of the annexation in the draft, of the draft, the service agreement that we have on file.
Thank you. Let's close the public hearing. Gentlemen, any discussion?
So they've, they've already, I've noticed they've already started construction though, or it looks like they have. Am I mistaken? The northeast corner?
I'm not aware that they have started any, I don't know if we have.
If that's, if that's the piece of property, they have. They've got a road going in already. I just was curious. I mean, could they, I mean, I just didn't know if that was.
That's over there for the Heather Lane, right?
I'm sorry?
Off of Heather Lane. Is that the, I'm not, I'm not.
Mr. Tucker, would you like to?
Thank you, Joe.
They have started the street construction.
Not?
Yeah, there's a road construction on the east side of.
I just didn't know they could do that before we got it approved, so I guess I'm a little confused. Liz, yes, Liz.
So they can, because even if a property is outside of city limits, you can still be doing work, but Joe, when he reviews the service agreements, the condition is that they have to be built to city standards or else he won't take it. So that's part of the service agreement.
So that's already been done?
Yeah. So that's, and that should, you guys should have a copy of that.
The road is currently in the county, but they're building it to city standard.
That's what I wanted to.
So once we annex it, it'll be to our standard.
Yeah, councilman, we like to try to work with the developers as they come in and if they have a timeframe, we know they're going to build the road and we know that they're going to build it to our standards and if they agree to that, then they can get going whether it's annexed or not.
Right. Well, that's all I was asking because I find, it just seems like that's backwards to me.
It is, but they agreed to build it to our standards, so it worked out.
Yeah, I understand. I've been watching it and couldn't figure out what was going on, so.
Thank you everyone for their participation in that one. Is there no more questions? I entertain a motion?
So moved.
I'm going to give that motion to councilman Canales, or second?
Second.
Seconded by councilman Thompson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Love it.
All right, let's go to item number sixteen. Open a public hearing to consider requests by P Bart Park Spell Ranch LLC for initial zoning of SPD, Special Dwelling District on a twenty-four point five acre tract located in the southwest quarter of section thirty-nine, comma, block one, comma, T dash one dash S, comma, T and P R R Company Survey, Exeter County, Texas. All right, we'll now open a public hearing to discuss this matter. Anyone wishing to speak? Please let us know. Elizabeth, back to you, again.
Yeah, it's still me. So now that we have the annexation portion covered, we are moving on to the zoning for each of the tracts of land. So a little bit of repetition, but here we go. So the first one is again submitted by LCA on behalf of P B R Park Ranch. It is the twenty-four point five acre lot tract of land, and this would be for the special dwelling district. And once again, we do recommend the approval of the annexation with the zoning.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, or second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Thompson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Agenda item seventeen, open a public hearing to consider requests by Beaton Bowe Company, P P C, owner of initial zoning of LC, light commercial district on eleven point four two five acre section of land in section twenty-seven and twenty-eight, block forty-two, T dash one dash S, and T and P R R, County Survey, Exeter County, Texas. We will now open up a public hearing, discuss this matter. Anyone wishing to speak can do so. Elizabeth.
All righty. Okay, the applicant is again Maverick Engineering. I apologize. I don't know where this congestion came from, so I do apologize. So the owner is Beaton Bowe. The tract of land is eleven point four two five acre land. It's to be zoned as light commercial area. P N Z, as we had mentioned before, we went on February the sixth with the seven to zero vote on the zoning as well. So staff is recommending the approval of the annexation with the zoning.
Counsel, any questions? Oh, I'm sorry about that. I got to close this public hearing. Now, counsel, any discussion? All right, entertaining motion?
Hustle move.
Motion by Councilman Vasquez, or second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Haney. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item eighteen, open a public hearing to consider requests by Headley Estates LLC and Covington Brothers and Properties LLC, owners for initial zoning, request of our retail district on a twelve point eight three acre tract of land located in section five, block forty-one, T and dash one dash S, T and P Railroad Company Railway Survey, Exeter County, Texas. We'll now open up a public hearing to discuss this matter. At this time, anyone in the public wishing to speak is so invited. Elizabeth.
All right, this is the last one for me. So Maverick Engineering submitted on behalf of the owners of Headley Estates, the twelve point eight two acre tract of land. This would be the proposed zoning for resi, I'm sorry, for retail. I apologize. We went to P N Z meeting on February the sixth, seven to zero vote as well. So staff is recommending the approval of the annexation with the zoning.
Thank you. We'll close the hearing. Any discussion, counsel? If not, all favor, oh, we'll, we'll have a motion first. I move. Motion by Councilman Thompson. Second by Councilman Canal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time. Let's move on to item number nineteen.
Did you guys open it to the public? I didn't hear that.
Yes, you did. Now, you can come up, though. You have a few in front of us. All right, item number nineteen, we're gonna open up a public hearing to consider approval by the request of Edgar Rodriguez for zone change from SF dash three, single family residential district three, to PD, planned development for, planned development district on lots one through seven, block fourteen. We'll now open up this matter for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak can do so. Liz, would you start us off?
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for listening to all of my staff today. We broke it down so it wasn't just me up here. So today's zoning cases, I will have to, I guess, talk to you guys about it in regards that before you vote on it, we do have a policy that if any zoning case gets rejected, especially if it's like a PD, it, they can't come back to you guys for six months. So I just, just want to make you guys aware of that. So before you vote, there might be other solutions of what we can do so we are not hurting developments out there, and we can probably work with them in another way. So.
So you're nervous about this?
No, I'm not nervous about it. I just, you know, we've been working with several of, of our developers, and we just wanna make sure, you know, it's, it's different. You'll see right now. Do you, who has the pointer?
Oh, it's in my hand.
Okay, so for this one, Mr. Rodriguez is asking to do a zone change from SF three to a planned development district. So a planned development district in this case is gonna be for residential. Usually, it's something that's gonna be very out of the box from a regular zoning, and it is. So it's, it's in an established residential area, however, there's a school right next to it. And recently, they came to us to replat this property because the lots were pretty big, and there was, you know, we're trying to do infill development, so there's a big need for more housing. So the properties that you're seeing, and I will later defer to the developer that's here, Mr. Brito, that he can probably go into more detail of what he's planning to do in here. So what we're looking at is lot, so we have one through seven. Lots four through seven is gonna be single family residential homes. Lot one through, one, two, and three, we're looking at what would be considered duplex. So what they're asking for is usually a planned development district, we'll see a site plan. We'll see exactly how the footprint of it's gonna look. We put in the different conditions that's gonna go in there, because remember, it goes, and it's different than our regular zoning, so the setbacks are gonna be called out. The height of it's gonna be called out. How many parking spots is gonna be called out in this area? Because it's going, not against, but it's different than what our regular ordinance would call for. So what they're planning to do is to still have no more than two-story height of building structure. One unit with two, I guess, one, in one lot, you would have two units in there, but they would be sharing the roof. We will have a carport and one additional parking. So when we went to planning and zoning, they did recommend denial. Because they didn't have a site plan, and that's one of the requirements, and because of the parking, they were very concerned about how much parking would be spilling out onto the streets. Just because, you know, you have two units, you're only having two parking for it. So that was the reasons why P N Z denied it. But our charter says that, you know, anybody can appeal, can appeal and ask to come to city council, so that's why we're here today. Why I am recommending denial is because we don't have a site plan, and I can't really call out all of the conditions of it as of right now. However, if you do decide to move forward and approve this, I do recommend that we still have to get the site plan approved, condition on the site plan. And that will come back to P N Z and city council.
Would that be six months?
So if you guys, so as long as you don't vote.
Okay.
It depends on how you're gonna vote. So if you're gonna vote with my recommendations that, yes, we still have to do the site plan approval, then it's, the site plan will come back to here. But you're voting that, yes, you're okay with doing this planned development district. Just the condition is that we're gonna approve the site plan. If you vote no completely, that means that they can come back for six months, unless it's keeping it for a single family SF three.
Let me ask you this, the first.
Wait, we have to, excuse me, sir, we have to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry.
We got two that want to speak, so keep it open.
Two that wanna speak? Oh, who's that? Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm not the speaker.
I can speak?
Yes.
So the first houses you're building are a single family house, is right?
Yeah, the one, so lot four to seven, yes. And I, and I think Mr. Brito has some exhibits that he would like to show for you.
And then the, the rest are duplexes?
Correct.
Two-story?
Two-story.
Two?
Yes.
Two duplexes, two stories each?
Yeah. I don't know how they're, that's the thing that, I don't know how they're gonna look yet, so.
Well, that looks like a good place to put them. That lot, it looks like it needs some housing on it.
Who's our speaker tonight?
First one is Paul Miller.
Paul?
I'm Paul Miller. I own the house just north of this drill site. And when we were here last time, it was turned down, and the developer agreed. He, he made the comment that one, two, and three, he would build houses on it. And then on Conover, four, five, six, and seven.
The one with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven?
Oh, okay, look.
Yes, thank you.
We were here, he, he agreed to put houses on one, two, and three. He put the condos, townhouses, whatever, on four, five, six, and seven. I want it developed, but if, on these inside lots, my house is right next to it. And they had to go back, originally, they had thirty-foot fronts and make them fifty-foot fronts for single-family homes. So now they got them like fifty, fifty-five approximately foot front. If they're gonna put two houses on it, there's not gonna be any on-street parking for this half circle that comes off of Corona and Fontana. They're gonna be parking all that in front of the old existing homes. I mean, I want it developed, but I want single-family homes on one, two, and three. They can do whatever they want to on four, five, six, and seven. I mean, I built my home there in nineteen ninety-seven, I mean nineteen seventy-seven. As a matter of fact, I got to be, got to buy the first lot, because my father-in-law knew Amel Beck, which was first savings, I believe, developed it. And there is, something, about in the middle of this, there's a capped-off well, abandoned well, in this drill site. I do know that. Which, I mean, whoever, one that's unfortunate enough to have their house built over it, is not gonna be happy, you know? I know that, because my, my dad had twin sisters that married brothers, and the third brother condemned it, I mean, condemned the well. And told me that it would never be used as a drill site again. But it does have a condemned well in it. That's either here or there. If they wanna put houses on one, two, and three, I'm a hundred percent for it. I'm not otherwise, because they made them go back and get fifty-foot lots for single-family homes. Now, at least fifty-foot. And now they wanna put two units on that same fifty-foot, wouldn't, there'd be no on-street parking. I mean, we're, the, the old residents are gonna be the ones that pay the price. And what I understand, they wanna build like a thousand square-foot properties. Well, everything else in the area is fourteen to seventeen hundred feet. You know? House has two thousand feet in it right south of it.
Ms. Chauncey, based on this gentleman's description of what he said originally was discussed. So what we're looking at here is, if I'm understanding you right, Greg, sir?
One other thing, sir?
I'm sorry.
Can I say one other thing? Originally, it was approved for single-family.
For, for lots, one, two, and three?
All of them.
All of them, all seven?
For all of them?
Twenty-two.
Okay.
As I, as I said, twenty-two, it was approved under condition that they did the environmental, because of that well.
Yeah, that was before I even came on board, so I, yeah, okay.
I think we have, I think we've reached our time limit, so I apologize, but.
If I can defer to the applicant, because I think the designs have changed a lot.
Who's our second speaker?
Mr. Brito.
Mr. Brito, would you please come forward?
Thank you, sir. Norberto Brito the third with entry, Brito, and I am the consultant for the developer, Mr. Edgar Rodriguez. And so, yeah, the time limit has gone quite, quite long, because we, we did get this back approved, as the gentleman said, back in twenty twenty-two. We replatted this drill site to try to develop the area. The question of the well, we, we got all the documents when we did the replat, and it is abandoned, and it doesn't sit on any of the lots that we created. It sits in the alley. We did paving and drainage plans that have been approved by the city engineering staff. We're trying to get it constructed as soon as the stormwater permit will be released, which that's been a chore, but that's, that's another item. We, we have done all the other water and sewer. He's actually gonna extend city water and sewer to all the lots so they can all have access to the utilities from, from the city. And then going to what we're trying to develop here is, I think she did word it, lots one, two, and three would have the single-family homes on it. And then lots four, five, six, and seven, we are trying to introduce townhouses and duplexes. The, these would be in the range of twelve hundred to eighteen hundred square feet. They would be double-story. We did get denied at P N Z on the basis that the, the ones that denied it were, we didn't have enough parking. But I think the parking was relayed incorrectly. We are putting a unit on each one of these. We are gonna reach the setbacks that have been set forth on the replats. We're not asking for any adjustments on that. We're designing these homes to fit on what's currently there on, on those lots. The, the parkings, there will be four spaces on-site. We have a twenty-five-foot setback already on each one of those lots. We will push the structure back another eleven feet, which will give us the thirty-six foot of clear space for four parking spaces up there on the front side. We will introduce a lot of zero-scape, low-maintenance for these townhouses that we're proposing on the Conover side. And so that's, that's where we're at. Some of the compromise, we, we are gonna compromise, because right now, all of it, we're asking for PD, but the compromise was, another concern was on the cul-de-sac side, on the Fontana side, was to do single-family homes. My client has said, we don't have an issue with that. We'll do single-family homes on the interior to keep within rhythm what's going on. On that side, on the Fontana Street side, there are all single-family developments in there. They're single-family homes. Same thing, we're gonna introduce a, a home size that's somewhere in the range of fifteen hundred square foot to eighteen hundred square foot max in, in that area, and have all those built out. Other than that, I think that was the issue. And then, as Elizabeth stated, if you, if council does decide to, to vote no on it, we would, we would ask to at least have it tabled so we could go back with, with planning department. And, and, and we will submit the site plans. We will submit all the building plans, you know, when, when the time comes to do that, and, and nothing's gonna get built until it, it passes all the departments from planning to building services and engineering and all that.
Tie this up?
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
So really, I have a question about the abandoned well. I mean, we keep blowing it off as if it's not, something can't happen with this. Anytime that you have an abandoned well and somebody does work on another well that's tied in with this, you get flowback, back up through that back well, which could flood that whole zone, and every house in there could be contaminated.
I'm sorry, sir, you got a time?
So until that's resolved, I say no on.
That was resolved when they did the plating. That's why we were able to move forward with the plating. And it was done in what year? The first one?
Twenty-twenty-two.
No, before that wasn't.
Why would we build a well?
Twenty-twenty.
In an alley.
It's in an alley, which means it's now the city's responsibility. Now that becomes the city's responsibility.
I don't know, Dan, I'll defer legal on that. I don't, I don't know who's responsible for a well that, in a city alley. That's not our well. I don't know that.
What did you just, I'm sorry, what did you just ask? That the well's in the alley?
That's what I understood.
Yeah. The plug will be in the alley.
Then make a motion that we table this, mayor.
I'll second that. Sure, the mayor, Rick, please come to the front, sir, identify yourself again.
That well was an injection well. I was told by the man that condemned it, and it was bleeding off. It's why they condemned it instantly. It should not, it shouldn't create a problem. I'm not trying to create a problem with the well. I'm far to three houses on the interior and the other, but, but it was properly, you know, capped off by, by Amaco. It was an Amaco well. It's what it was.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Let's close the public hearing. Additional discussion? So Liz, if I understood, there's a lot of conversation out of this issue. I understood y'all are recommending we deny it?
So we were recommending denial because we didn't have a site plan. Because of the site plan, when you have a PD, you have to list all of the conditions in there. So how we protected ourselves was by saying, we still need the approval of the site plan in there.
Mayor, since we need just the plans, and this needs to be looked at, a little closer, I'd recommend tabling this. And make a motion to table it.
But I do wanna mention that we do have a lot of properties throughout the city that get, like, that had a drill site. They get plugged, they get abandoned. We go through all the procedures of getting all the documentations before we move forward to being able to, to plat, so they can be reused for a different service.
Thank you, Liz. But there is a motion on the table by Councilman Canal. There's a second by Councilman Mitch. Oh, you, I'm sorry, Stoker. So.
So here, may I, mayor, make a comment?
We can have discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion on the floor. If we have a vote for it, but we can have discussion.
Yeah, I just haven't been able to say anything, because everybody else is talking. I just wanted to know, are we setting a precedent here, precedent here, by either A, tabling it, or doing all this without following the normal procedures? In other words, if we're making everybody else do site plans and all that stuff before we get approval, I don't thi, I think it sets a precedent. Also, with that abandoned well on there, I, we all understand the oil patch pretty well. You talk to people down in Crane, and ask them about those, on that golf course down there, about those plugged wells that are leaking and causing all kinds of problems. So I just wonder if we open ourselves up, counsel, for any kind of liability?
I will say, you have a junior high a hundred feet away, you have houses all around it. So if you're worried about that, you're, yeah, there's, there's, people go to, kids go to school there every day with a hundred feet away.
But there's a buffer. I'm just saying, somebody's gonna build a well on top of that. It's in the alley. So it, so it's become ours?
Councilman Thompson, your, your recommendation is to deny it, correct?
Correct. So based on section fourteen to four, B and C, it says site plan should come with the application.
Correct. I mean, I. But that's also based on, I guess, what are your options? Approve or deny? Or?
Or?
Or, you know, you, you can't ask them to provide this, and therefore, they provided, and that's why we come back. You just don't vote on it right now. Because by you voting no...
You were saying, but if you table it, that's only a motion right now on the table.
Yeah.
On the floor is to table the motion, which will give them additional time. They've got to come up with additional.
But they're gonna have to do the site plan.
Correct, if that's the recommendation to provide a site.
So I cannot, can I amend the motion to, to table it, subject to them bringing a completed site plan and all the requirements necessary back? You can do that.
If you feel accepted, you can do that.
If he'll, if he'll accept it. If Councilwoman Cal will accept it.
I accept it, yes.
And you said...
Yeah, no, I, that was, that was my whole point, is to give them time to get all that done, to bring it back.
I wanna state it, though. I don't want to be, we thought it was gonna do this.
Any other discussion, gentlemen? You're, everybody understand the motion, which is to table?
Yes.
At this time.
Subject to commission.
Bring back site plan.
Site plan.
And do an all necessary backboard.
And I just wanna state that I believe it goes back all the way to P and Z, so...
Well, the motion on the floor is to table, subject to bringing forth additional site plans. So it'll be tabled for the night if we vote in favor of the motion, so, uh, we wanna call the question, or we keep discussing it? Let's call the question.
I'll call the question.
Call the question. Thanks, sir. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It appears the motion is unanimous. Thank everyone for their participation and time. That's a difficult one.
Yes, it was.
All right, let's go to, uh, Gen item twenty. Open a public hearing to consider approval of DJK Inc. for a zone change from FD, Future Development District, to PD dash H, Plan Development District Housing on eighty-three point one-seven Surface Acre Track located in Section eleven, Block forty-one, dash two, dash S, of TNP Railroad County Commission Survey, City of Odessa, Midland County, Texas. Will now open a public hearing to discuss, uh, this issue. Anyone wishing to speak, please sign up over here. I'll call on Liz.
Thank you again. So this one is another property that came in at one point as future development, so until it has a purpose, we can say, they come to us in order to get the zoning for it. In this case, they're seeking to, um, get a planned development for housing develop, for PD for housing developments on the, um, eighty-three point seven acres. So what we're seeing in here is that, uh, we're gonna have, uh, five hundred and fourteen new homes come into this area. We're gonna have two parks that is gonna be here. The lots are gonna be forty by a hundred and fifteen. Um, we have been working on a master plan in this area, uh, for quite a bit, so we made sure that we had proper circulation. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure if, uh, the road that we're building here, um, Mission Boulevard came to you guys, but there's a whole road that's going from Mission Boulevard all the way to Yukon. Then it goes through County Road, and it'll hit Business I twenty, so this would help with the circulation, just because of all the housing that we're adding to this area. Um, in addition to that, they have been working, um, in order to get a new fire station in this area because of all the housing that we're adding. And, um, they were great working with us, um, in providing two additional parks for the area, and we're, right now, it's, uh, designed to work with a, um, uh, HOA, but they might come later on, if we can get it all worked out, that they're considering doing maybe like a PID for, for the parks in there. Um, staff is recommending, uh, it, sorry, we did go to planning and zoning, uh, five to zero was voted. Uh, so staff is recommending approval of this zone change request, subject to condition A through D.
So this property is... She's trying to do something.
I'm trying to go back to the conditions, but I can't.
I'm just trying to get a better picture of where it is. Back behind Bass Prochops, correct?
Well, it's way behind, uh, so let me...
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was looking for.
So it's closer to Bankhead, um, and that, so we've came to, to the south.
Got it. Bankhead is a purple highway, got it?
Yes, and the property to the west is, um, housing that we came a while ago with. So you're continuing all the housing, and it's gonna reach all the way close to Yukon Road. We're just coming in phases right now, as they're purchasing the land.
And that purple road there is, that's Bankhead?
Correct.
Bankhead Highway?
Yes.
Is Bankhead?
County.
The old, the club? Where the old Mission Dorado was, yeah. Mission Dorado. And Bankhead is in, actually, Bankhead Highway is in Midland, is the Midland property. And the good news, City of Odessa, the good news is I learned yesterday at MPO that they're getting ready to pave that from the airport all the way down to Fodry. It'll be, it'll be concrete, so that's fixing to happen. So just FYI, which will help a lot with that. And the retention basins are, who dug the retention basins along Bankhead there?
They are, so a lot of them, and I can defer...
Yeah, that all floods down that direction, John.
Joe.
Mayor Rick, that is, uh, the Honorable John Langrath.
Sorry, John.
Well, certainly not the Honorable John. I think that's, uh, Brooks Langrath that's the Honorable, but, uh, this whole area has been master-planned. Uh, the development that you can see that's north of here is, is that Bobby Cox subdivision.
Right. The... Santa Rosa?
Via Rosa.
Via Rosa.
Via Rosa, it was named for Taco Villa and Rosa's, I mean, anyway. Long story. But the detention basins were sized and were dug along Bankhead Highway to take care of all of the drainage coming from the north, and to keep it from crossing over Bankhead Highway and going into the Ridge Wood subdivision, which was built in the nineteen seventies in a play, LA, but irrespective. This is a single-family residential. It'll be a continuation of the stuff, as Elizabeth said, just to the west of there. This is another next phase of D.R. Horton's stuff that they're, they're continuing, uh, residential development. We are planning another large, uh, detention basin, just a little bit east of here, that'll be part of this development and the new, uh, what we call New Road Four or Midway, which you'll be seeing in the next, uh, few council meetings, where they're extending that road all the way up to, uh, Yukon, which Elizabeth referred to, and as part of this development to help create circulation.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
All right.
Let's, uh, close the public hearing. Any counseling discussion? Hearing none. They make a motion?
With approval?
There's a motion by Councilman Thompson, who is our second.
Second.
Second by Council, um, Canal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Last, twenty-one. Open a public hearing to consider approval of the request by D.R. Horton, Texas Limited, for a zone change from PD, Future Development District, to SPD, Special Dwelling District, on an eight-point-two-three acre track located in Section forty-five, Block forty-one, T dash two, dash S, TNP Railroad County Survey, Odessa, Ector County, Texas. Let's open up a public hearing to discuss, um, this issue. Anyone willing to speak can do so at this time. Go ahead, Liz.
Thank you again. So, um, D.R. Horton is requesting to, uh, zone this as a, again, when it comes in for annexation, it comes in as a future development. Um, and now they're having use, which they're doing, they're requesting a special dwelling district. Special dwelling district means that you can go down to different lot sizes, and you can do a little bit more to it. So what we're looking to do in, in this specific area is more what you have in front of you. Sorry, we forgot to put it on here. So they're looking at townhomes, bro, what I like to call row housing. They'll have a separation, a fire separation wall. They're around sixteen hundred square feet. Uh, they will have two parkings for each one. They do have an alley in addition to that. What else? So, um, so they're on a specific, uh, special dwelling district. It allows for the lot to go down all the way to twenty foot wide. However, in this case, they're going to thirty-five. Like I said, it's row housing, so that's why you're building to zero property line. Um, and the reason why for this, i- it's part of the whole master plan that Mr. Bell had for this, uh, area. So right next to it, we have, um, Idea School. And so the concept of it was that, one, they wanna make, uh, the whole neighborhood more walkable. So by introducing, uh, this type of housing, we're allowing to have housing for maybe like the teachers or like some of the students who, that, you know, may not be able to afford to go into a single-family residential house, but you still have the great quality of, of house, and, and it introduces something different into it. So it's more of a transitional, um, and it, like I said, it fits well with the, I always go to the approved section. However, um, this one, we do have something very unique. We did send out twenty-four notices. Out of that, we had nine that came as objection, and then we had one that came back as no response. So what does that mean? That means that I need you guys to vote by a supermajority vote. Anytime that we have more than twenty percent of objection, we have to vote by a supermajority vote. So that means that only one of you guys would be able to say no. And again, I wanna remind you guys that, um, if it gets denied, they can't come back for six months with this kind of purpose. Yes.
Are they gonna sell these, or is this rental?
I will have to defer to the applicant. I don't know the answer.
Who's our speaker tonight?
Well, I'm representing, uh, D.R. Horton.
Well, then you're our speaker, Mr. Langrath.
We have another speaker.
They've got another speaker that...
Yes.
I'm, I'm representing just as a...
Okay. Let's call our speaker up.
Kevin Kenyon?
How are you, sir?
Good, how are you? Uh, thanks for having me, Mr. Mayor, council. My name's Kevin Kenyon, and I, if you go back a couple pages, my house is in one of the pictures.
Which one? You'll tell us when you stop.
Go, I think it's the other direction. Right there.
That one?
The tall one with the windows right there. That's my house with the two fence posts. Anyways, uh, I wanna start off just, just saying that, uh, I'm not against developing Odessa. I think it's great. I mean, when, when I first bought my first home, there was like three houses on the market back in, uh, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, or some, somewhere around that time. But, uh, I did wanna, you know, bring a concern out regarding the addition of the townhomes being built, and that's the safety and the privacy of my family. As the property currently sits, any individual on the property can see directly inside of my home, as there are seven windows, as well as a door on the north side of my home, which face the townhomes, uh, three of which look directly into a bedroom and a bathroom, which I brought pictures to show you guys.
And this, these pictures are taken from the curb on Buffalo Street.
Publish them too. Mr. Stoker, pass them around, correct?
That being said, as well, vehicles that leave these townhomes will drive directly towards the rear, rear fences of the properties. Uh, a- as I mentioned, I'm not against it completely, but I would like to propose that the developer, uh, be required to ensure proper land grading to the area designated for the construction, as to not be able to see inside of my home. I would also like to propose that the developer construct an eight-to-ten-foot privacy slash safety retaining wall, uh, similar to the ones that run, um, parallel to Yukon, um, as well, or, excuse me, or, and this would be along all the properties on the north side that this construction directly affects, or at minimum, that the city allow directly affected properties to construct ten-foot privacy fences to ensure that any builders, contractors, or individuals that reside in the townhomes cannot see directly into the existing properties. I'm great with development. I'm not great with someone watching my wife shower or my kids, so that's where I stand. Thank you, guys, for having me, and thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your time. Mr. Langrath?
I wouldn't interrupt you, Liz.
No, I was...
Okay. John Langrath, let me, uh, try to address several of those. There will be a solid wall that'll be built along Yukon Road, just like all of the other D.R. Horton subdivisions in that area. Uh, these are single-story townhouses. They have rear entry, uh, two-car garages, and so, uh, we don't feel like there's a, you know, there was a question about parking, but there should be plenty of on-street parking, since we have two-car, uh, garages on each one of these units. You have pictures, uh, that is the exact product. D.R. Horton built those. They sold them as fast as they could get them built, uh, in Devonian, or, uh, in Devonian Street, which in Mr. Cox's subdivision just a couple of years ago, so they felt like they, that product would do well again, so that's, that's what we're proposing. Uh, there's a fence along the, uh, east side of the property that was built by Horton for their other existing subdivision, and then they'll have the fence along, um, Yukon Road, which will be a masonry wood fence, exactly like what, what they've been doing out there in the past. There'll be no access to Yukon Road. It'll all be to Deer Creek Ranch Road. This was shown, it was never zoned as a, a multifamily site, but in the Parks Bell Master Plan that, uh, was seen by many councils and planning asserting commissions ago, when, uh, Parks Bell did that about twelve, fourteen years ago. This was always a townhouse site, as is the next one on the other side of the school that, uh, will be coming to you soon also.
Mr. Langrath, how much of what you just described satisfies what that gentleman was concerned about?
Uh, I think most of it does. I'm not exactly sure about which one-story house might be looking, uh, at, at his particular house.
You mentioned the brick fence on the north side of that property along Yukon. I'm talking on the north side of the properties on Deer Creek, and, I mean, as you can see from the pictures, that's standing from the curb, so...
Yeah, there, there...
Any home that's on that property, whoever, I mean, whoever they beat can look directly into my house, that, that, you know, permanently.
I'm, I'm a little confused.
I am too.
I am too.
Where's his protest?
Can we bring that picture back, Liz, so that, that shows, we, I can kinda see it better from his house?
To clarify, there's a street that they're building.
Oh, Deer Creek's already built.
That's there, so...
So I would...
Can you go to that picture, 'cause let's all talk about it together, so we're all on the same page.
Tell us where Deer Creek is.
The one where you see his house, Liz, the one that, uh, other direction, I think.
Keep going.
Yeah, keep one of the... Keep going. Next one, right there. John, see that tallest two-story? On the right, it's on the screen.
That street is Yukon right there, and there'll be a... But that doesn't solve his problem. Right. And so I don't, go back to the, go back to the aerial photograph, Elizabeth, if you can, that, that showed the site and the neighborhood.
I guess that's the question I have is, go, keep moving. The fence that you have, sir, is it, is there a, um...
Where's your lot?
Um, right along the turquoise, the straight line. That's Deer Creek right there. My lot is the fourth house, one, two, three, four.
That's facing that subdivision?
The backside of my house is facing that subdivision, where you can see directly into the seven windows, day or night. And that's where I, you know, made the proposition.
So the back of your house faces north?
Yes, sir.
Right.
Okay, go, go to this. Do you have this in?
No, that's why I took it terribly.
Okay. The, uh, site plan that, uh, we submitted, if you look at it, his is shown, is lot one, two, three, four, on that site plan, and it's right across the alley, and then the side, the side yard... And it's right across the alley and then the side, the side yards of the houses that we're proposing to construct.
One, two, three, four right here, is that?
Can I ask something stupid?
I doubt it's gonna be stupid.
You want them to build a ten-foot wall, why don't you build a ten-foot wall yourself to protect yourself?
I said that in, in the event that it's not approved.
That's my, that's my question. Is there a limit to how, how, how fence he can build?
At minimum. That's a cheap cotton question.
Six foot is what everybody's requiring.
That's who they always blamed at ZVA.
It's based on the, the cost of it. And then if they hit eight feet, then now we need to have foundation and everything. And then, so that's why usually it hits around just a little bit, seven-ish.
But we saw from the pictures, well, I can hardly tell if there's not a fence there yet. How far is your fence now?
Right now, it's six feet.
Six foot.
Yes, sir.
And, and that's what D.R. Horton typically builds is a six-foot fence along the side of Deer Creek also.
So, let me ask this question. Maybe this'll help clear it up. Lot four is right across from building three, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Is that the back of?
That's the side.
That's, that's the side?
Of building three.
Side of which?
But there's a road, I guess.
Deer Creek Road is there, building three, the, the, I guess, the south side of building three. Is that the back of that townhouse?
That's the side of that townhouse.
That's the side of the townhouse?
And then, and then there's the little side yard there. And, and then there's, then there would be a fence along Deer Creek.
He's number four and he's looking at three.
Yeah, but three's right there, so I'm trying to figure out what that is right there. That's the side yard, that's the side yard, the side of his house is right there.
That's the side.
Okay, so that's.
So, all the houses are gonna be facing the street and these are the alleys.
It's, it's not a full twenty feet all the way. It, it, it's whatever's left over. I think it ranges from, it's.
So, where are the garages?
Through the alley.
They can't, they, the side has to be at least ten.
So, so this.
So, through here.
So, I'm trying to figure out the orientation of this property.
May I go to your picture?
Yeah, yes.
So, this.
Before we go any further with questioning, my question was, are these rentals?
This is all the housing?
Are these to buy?
No, sir. They're, they're for sale.
So, this is the front?
If they're rentals, you're gonna drive the cost of everybody else's houses.
Yes, no, they're for sale just like the ones that they did previously.
They're gonna be, you'll be seeing the side of this house.
Yes, and you'll have some kind of landscapes in here.
Sold and not rented?
Right, but there's be windows here and windows here and windows there.
It would be a part of our record.
Yes, sir.
Was that?
Yeah, it helps. I guess it helps. I think we're all sensitive, people being able to see inside someone's house, we get it. But we also get to development and so we want that. And so, seems an easy cure is to build a taller fence. I don't know how easy a cure that is. I mean, it sounds easy to state. I don't know how easy it is to get down on.
Well, again, these are single-story?
The, these are single-story homes and.
The maximum height of a, a window on a single-story home is?
Six foot, eight foot.
Six to eight feet?
Yeah, six, I mean, you don't have a ceiling of eight and a half feet or so.
But before that, during construction, there won't be anything there at that point in time. They'll still obviously need to grade it. I don't know if that's gonna go up or down. As it's currently sits from the road, it goes up good three to four feet. And during the entirety of the construction, whoever's over there building will be able to look directly into my backyard as well as my house. And, and I could say I'm not against this completely, that, I mean, I'm just asking for privacy and security.
So, you're not asking that the homeowner be looking? You think the construction workers might be doing some of that?
Construction workers or people that are currently living there, either one. I mean.
Well, it's gonna be the side, it'll be the side of the townhouse, so.
It'll be the side of the townhome, but there's still yard area, things like.
But there's also a fence.
Right there, yes, sir.
And being a single-family house, the windows, like John said, eight-foot ceiling, six-foot window, it'll be looking at the fence.
And from that perspective, it would only, it would depend on where the grading was done to the land, whether you could see on the house from the, the constructed house into my yard. It depends solely on the grading of that. And that, I, I don't know whether it's gonna be graded to where it's lower than that or higher than that, but the pictures that I provided are me standing on the edge of the street and that's the view that you can see into my house and yard.
Maybe this will solve the problem, John, at least answer the question. Where's, where's the drainage go? The drains go down to Yukon or is it come down to the, towards his house?
Uh, it, it, it goes to, uh, yes. And there, there's a big retention pond, which is future city park to the west, immediately west of this site.
Immediately west.
Yes, and it, all the drainage, all drainage goes west.
So, yeah, it goes downhill.
Yeah. And, and you can see by that picture, there, there's, it's generally relatively flat, just like most of Odessa's. So, there's not gonna be a great amount of fill or a great amount of cut.
Picture says a thousand words, but seeing it in person tells the truth.
Liz, how hard is it to, to allow higher fence?
I, I don't wanna spend, I don't wanna spend my client's money, but I'll, I'll commit to D.R. Horton and by site plan, approval of this site plan, we, we could commit to an eight-foot fence along Deer Creek if that helps.
However, remember, we're utilizing the alleys as a way to cars going in and out. So, we need to be conscious of the clarity. We can't put a whole eight-foot.
Right, I was more thinking of, of, the neighbors to the south, they wouldn't build a taller fence. Let them build a taller fence. I don't know what's that, that way, it doesn't even affect D.R. Horton development, but a neighbor, a landowner can, can get us privacy if they want privacy. So, I'm trying to figure out, can we do that easily? That's my question.
Trees.
Can we, I want those neighbors to be able to build a taller fence if they want one. If they don't want one, fine.
Well, the neighbors can build a, a higher fence.
Well, that's my question, is there any prohibition against him building a ten-foot fence?
It's just that he, at that point, when he goes to a ten-foot fence, he will need foundation. He will need that kind of detail.
But he can get it done.
That's it, that's all I'm asking, can he get it done?
Can he get it done?
So, bottom line is yes, there's just stepping grades that he can't.
Sounds like to me we have a solution, sir, if you're willing to, any neighbors willing to build a fence?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. That's all I wanted was.
We're not gonna prevent you building a fence, I guarantee you that.
Thank you.
You need to come back to us for anything, we're not gonna, the fence gonna get built.
Yes, sir. Appreciate that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, thanks, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Also, he just wanted stipulations that this wasn't being built to be rented out.
Right now, that's, they're not, he didn't, D.R. Horton building and renting out. I mean, he's, he's a sale.
These are sales.
They're for sale.
Sales.
Yeah. All right, we haven't closed the public hearing yet, but I'm gonna close the public hearing unless.
How then, it, you mentioned it's being included in, in the documentation for the fence one for us to be able to do that. I don't need anything on that, but as far as her renting versus buying, that is gonna be in the documentation?
So, the, it's D.R. Horton, right? D.R. Horton tends to just sell. That doesn't mean that whoever buys that property, you know, they, they can rent out their, their home.
They're not building rental apartments.
Right, these are not rental apartments.
These are homes.
All right, let's close the public hearing.
You'll be okay.
Counsel, any other discussion? Not entertain a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Haynes, or second? Thinking by Councilman Mitchell, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Do we need to take one?
How much more we got?
Thirteen, fifteen.
Hold this. We'll keep going. If you take a break, counsel, take a break when you need one. Let's go to res- resolution, agenda item twenty-two. Consider approving a performance agreement by between the Odessa Development Corporation and Insulation Distributors, Inc. Tracy Jones. You don't look like David Butan, but we'll take you.
Yes, not, not David Butan. He does apologize that he could not be here. I'm Tracy Jones. I'm the Director of Business Retention Expansion for the Odessa Chamber of Commerce, Odessa Development Corporation. And on February thirteenth, the ODC Board met and approved a grant for Insulation Distributors Incorporated. They are a new company moving into Odessa. They are based out of Minneapolis, have been in business for forty years. And they're purchasing a building at eight fifty West University and will be investing one million dollars into renovating that facility inside and out because it is in a little poor shape, but they're gonna make it look better. They will be adding four new full-time equivalent positions at an annual payroll of five hundred thousand dollars a, a year. And the ODC did vote unanimously and is recommending that they are, did recommend and approve a job creation grant of a hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars, which will be paid out over a five-year period of an equal payment of thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty cents per year as long as they stay in compliance. And so, their recommendation to you guys tonight is that you approve that grant also.
Thank you, Tracy.
Sure.
Do you have any questions for Tracy?
Move approval.
I'll second it.
All right, motion to approve by Councilman Thompson, a second by Councilman Vasquez. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tracy. All right, item, agenda item twenty-three, consider amending the Odessa Development Corporation bylaws. Dan Jones? So, Mayor, Council, what we're gonna do is from this point on, ODC has already agreed to this, but, so now we need y'all to agree to it. We're gonna take out four-point-three Downtown Grants Design Review Board. That's gonna be gone. And what's gonna happen is that the Compliance Committee is gonna be doing this now. They're gonna be doing the review of the infrastructure and facade grant applications like for downtown. It's gonna be them. There's also a couple of other notes that we're gonna change. The six is actually gonna become a four, so we need to make that change. There's gonna be four non-voting ex officio members and there's gonna be one board member from the ODC that's gonna be on the compliance. Basically, housecleaning, housekeeping. All right, thank you, sir. Counsel, any questions?
Well, I'm a visual learner and you described a lot of things that you're saying you're gonna change or recommending to be changed. In, in the future, I'd like to be able to see those changes.
Those changes?
Those bylaws rather than just hearing it.
They're, they're, they should be in your package.
I know, but I'm just kidding.
Yes. But, but, so anyway, it's, it's, the facade infrastructure grants are still alive.
This may be a little off-topic and Tracy may can help, but if somebody's got a facade grant right now that's waiting on the Grant Review Board, what's, what happens to that?
Okay, so, Ron, they, they did go ahead and look at one the other day. They, they just met last week.
Bill Alexander's office?
Uh, no, it wasn't in Alexander's office. They have, I guess, and I have not asked for it to be looked at again. Is it a facade grant?
Okay.
It has passed. Oh, okay, it's already been passed.
Okay. But, so this will make it easier?
Easier, yes.
Faster, all right.
Any other questions, counsel?
No, good.
If not, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Stoker, a second by Councilman Vasquez, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Let's go to item number twenty-four. We're gonna consider accepting two deeds from P. Bar Parks Bill Ranch. Richard?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is really a council item. Also, when the Parks Family donated this land originally, they did not give the appropriate amount of land for the road and so this corrects that issue. We're accepting, we're asking you to accept.
A hundred and twenty-foot dedication from Parks Bill to be able to complete this road.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Not entertain a motion.
So moved.
Another motion by Councilman Thompson, a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mitchell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item number twenty-five, consider denying Atmos Energy West Texas Division Statement of Intent to Increase Rates. Richard?
Thanks again, Mayor, Council. Anytime Atmos brings a rate case to all of their West Texas cities, the cities basically bond together to take a look at the rate request. And so, this particular item, we're asking you to deny the rate increase requested by Atmos to allow us time to negotiate with them to reduce that rate increase.
Okay. Is there any speakers from the audience? No main speakers?
No, sir.
Counsel, anyone have any questions for Richard? Anything we do every year? All right, if not, I entertain a motion. Mr. Councilman Mitchell makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thinking by Councilman Canal, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We denied that motion. Item number twenty-six, consider professional service agreement with Bob Darrington Water Reclamation Plant Assessment. Alex, sorry to keep you waiting.
Oh, you're good.
He doesn't wanna go home and change diapers, I can tell you.
Oh, man. Three o'clock came early this morning. All right, counsel. In August twenty twenty-four, PSI Performance Services was selected through an RFQ to work with the city on a performance service contract for engineering and design for upgrades to the Bob Darrington Water Reclamation Plant. The Utilities Department has decided that it is in the best interest of the city to dissolve the current RFQ for these performance services. So, we decided that the scope of these services for, for performance services was not in the best interest of the city. Okay? So, the Utilities Department is asking for your consideration and approval to work with Corolla Engineers to complete a condition assessment, process evaluation, and master plan for the Darrington plant. These services are crucial in deciding on the best way to move forward with improving or renovating or building a new plant. These services will not exceed one million, five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
So, it's already been budgeted, huh?
Yes, sir. So, we do have this, we're gonna take this out of the Pioneer Funds, so it has already been allocated.
So, what about PSI, we just fire them?
Lack, lack of, lack of word, fire, yes. So, we, we did, due to the fact that it was an RFQ and not a bid process.
Right.
We went through purchasing, we spoke with Mr. Morton. We made sure we did all the correct channels and the process was the right way, you know, followed correctly. And we did inform the two candidates that were in the RFQ that we closed the RFQ. And so, now we're asking for professional services and we're going to work with them to do a design bid build. So, it will be either a, once we have the condition assessment, we will have several options. They will give us multiple options on if we should rehab, how much we should rehab, what we need to do right now, what we need to do if we wanna do it in phases, if we had, you know, how much it's gonna take to get us to the point where we need to be to run this plant and have it operational.
Thank you, Alex. Did we spend any money on, with PSI?
Absolutely not, no, sir.
Counsel, Mr. Stoker, your question?
Aren't we doing other work with them like the water meter replacement?
PSI, yes, sir. There, we are working with them on the, on the water meter replacement.
That, that's a contract that's underway. The difference is this one is not underway and we, we were able to move away from it before entering into the agreement with them.
So, what we decided as the utilities and with Mr. Morton was that the scope needed to change for how we wanted to do this project. So, PSI, the RFQ that the city put out, that the Utilities Department put out last year was for performance services. So, performance services is completely different than a normal design bid build, which is the normality of what cities do. So, the last council had asked the Utilities Department and the Purchasing Department to put out a performance services contract, which they thought at that time was the right way to handle that. And under the Utilities Department now, we decided that that, the scope needed to change.
Anybody else have any other questions? Not entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thinking by Councilman Stoker, a second by Councilman Thompson. A motion by Councilman Stoker, a second by Councilman Thompson, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
You can go home, go home. Take care of wife and child. Let's go over into item, agenda item twenty-seven, ordinances, we're gonna consider correcting the error in section one dash three dash three, single member district boundaries of the Odessa City Code. Dan.
Mayor, once more, this is just a housekeeping item, and we're basically gonna remove one three three, the single member districts, on, it's gonna be on page one, we're gonna remove it, I'm gonna hold it up for Councilman Vasquez on that.
He can't see it that far.
So it's just housekeeping.
I'm ready, but my machine's down, I don't have it.
Machine is broke. All right, guys, anybody have any questions for Dan? A little housekeeping. All right, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion by Councilman Canal, a second by Councilman Vasquez. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Agenda item twenty-eight, consider approval for the renewal of existing Encore franchise agreement. Joe?
Yes. First approval.
Well, you can go home too after this. You can go get your doctor's changed.
No.
You can help, Alex.
Not for a long time. What this is, is we have franchise agreement with Encore, which allows them to use our right of ways. The existing agreement expires, it's, was on a fifty-year term, then a five-year term, and that, that's up. So we, they have submitted a new agreement. We ran it through some outside counsel, they confirmed that it's pretty standard, what they offer other cities, and that's what we're presenting for renewal. And Mister Mendez, Mister Ortega is here with Encore, if I can help answer any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody have any questions for Joe or for Gus? Gus went home. He's back. Oh, he's back. Oh, there you are, Gus, sorry. Didn't see you back there. Anyone have any questions for Encore?
I do.
Okay. For who? Gus, would you please come forward?
Probably, probably for Gus.
Mayor recognized, Gus Ortega, man of the people.
Mayor, Council, thank you.
Thanks, Gus. And please don't take this the wrong way. I'm not mad at anybody, but I wish I had a monopoly. That's number one, I don't. So you want us to sign this contract, my problem with the whole process is lack of responsiveness to our needs. We're growing fast, we've been two years now trying to get two telephone poles moved that are in the middle of Mister Bell's pasture, as you know, with nothing but, there's, there's no cable, there's no internet, and we can't get it done. It's in engineering for two years to move two poles, thirty, forty, whatever it is, not very far. So my, I just have a problem with not getting any response, except that it's in engineering. And when we get a special project going like we do, had we started, had we been able to start on time, it would have been a real, it would have been a problem. Now, unfortunately, we are behind the curve, but still, the agreement comes up, and I know the answer's probably gonna be, go stick it in your ear, but I gotta ask, do my job as a councilman, is the, why can't we hold Encore some kind of standards as to, if we prioritize something that is what we feel like an emergency or needs to be done quickly, how do we get that done, and what's the best way to do it? Because there's, there's no, and y'all pay us a lot of money, don't get me wrong, I got the numbers, and you're putting a lot of infrastructure in, I get all that stuff. It's just, we don't have any way to hold you accountable. That's my problem. I had a business for forty years. If I didn't perform, I got fired. So we can't fire you because there's no other options. So please give me a solution, or help us find a solution to try to get done what we need to get done. I'm not talking about regular mundane stuff, you know? Mister Stoker showed us an app minute ago, but, see a light, light, it gets fixed, but I can't get two telephone poles moved, and it's frustrating.
Well, I think those two poles that you're, you're talking about, that's where the roadway is gonna go, but I think it's, we have to look at all the plants, okay? That line coming in there, we are gonna relocate that, we have a timeline when that is, that's gonna be done, completed, okay? The main thing, that's a two-line, a double, double circuit line, okay? You probably have about five thousand customers on that line. So once we get the, the design all figured out and so forth, now we need to figure out how we're gonna get those customers, keep them lights on while we're doing the construction work. Right now is a good time because of the weather, if it was summertime, it'd be very difficult to do that. So there's a lot of coordination. That wire that's up there, and it's, it's a heavy wire, seven ninety-five, it's a double circuit, it's, it's, it is, you gotta look at it because it is more complicated than what it looks like. You know, when, when it goes in there at dead ends, it goes underground, that goes directly to the substation, you know? So if that, if that line or something happens to it or something, you have Parks Bell out, part of Mission is gonna be out because that's what serves those customers.
Right.
So it, it does take time, I know it seems like we're not responding to it, but we are, we are progressing, progressing on that. Now, by April, in mid-April, we should be completed with that, and I made sure of that today before we came here, to make sure that our timeline that we provided to, to the city, that was still, still online. So we have done that. I believe you had spoken with Ed Mendez before, and we provided a timeline with you.
Yeah, I know.
But the thing is, I mean, we have to understand, it's, it's not just as, as easy as it looks just to move a couple of poles, it, it takes coordination to move some of those lines. We wanna keep that relationship with the city, you know, and I understand, hold us accountable, like you said a while ago, but it's growing, West Texas is growing. I mean, you know that, we all know it, it's a big, big projects out here going on, and our contractors, trying to get our contractors in line too, coordinating with them as well. You know, there's like a hundred and sixty-one points that we have to do to move all that, all that section. So it is time coordination, I understand your frustration, I know that. You wanna do your job, well, I mean, we're, we're trying to do the best that we can, but trying to coordinate everything is what it is, is, it's difficult for us as well, too.
Appreciate you, Gus.
All right, thank you.
You hurt his pain, though.
No, I, I do, no, hey, I see him.
He gets it every Saturday morning.
I see him every Saturday, so I mean, you know, no, I understand, I mean, we are working, we wanna work, keep the relationship with the city, you know, as we have been.
This has gave me a chance for the rest of the council to understand.
Understand, yes, sir, yeah.
I mean, they, I know what's going on, and I appreciate you guys a lot, but it's just, it's, it's extremely frustrating, and we've run into so many.
We'll, we'll get it done. I mean, we, we made sure, and I've talked to our, our project managers, make sure that we keep this in line, and that nothing falls through crack that we keep it moving.
Thank you.
I assure you, I'm, I'm, we're on top of it.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir, we appreciate it. Any other discussion, Counsel? If not, I entertain a motion.
What we need, Dan, I'm sorry, are we gonna, they're asking for how many years this time?
Asking for twenty years. Twenty-year agreement?
Yeah.
Twenty-year agreement.
We did five the last time, so that's my only question.
Right.
What do we, do we wanna go five, ten, to the twenty? I don't know.
Joe, come answer. Gus, you can have a reply, chance to reply. It's only eight forty, why should we worry about any more discussions?
You can set it whatever you like, our consultant did say fifteen to twenty was the norm, so, but it's up to you.
And, and we've also ran this by Thomas Mercado, you know, he does all the Atmos and the Gosling, yeah, and Electric, so we've ran it by him as well.
Dan?
And he's happy with it, he says it's pretty standard.
With twenty.
Yeah, I, I think last time what we had, we had a twenty-year, and then I think we had an amendment done, and it went to five years, Richard, I think you were, I think Richard was still here, we did, and it was automatic five-year renewal, so that's why it kinda looked like, but I think in the past, it was a twenty-year.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, we appreciate both of you.
So with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the new contract with twenty years.
All right, motion by Councilman Thompson, a second. Second by Councilman Canal. Any discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, item number twenty-nine, consider decodifying Article one dash one-eight annexations of the City Code of Ordinances. Richard.
Mayor, Council, this is an attempt to streamline the annexation process, you saw three annexations come through today for final approval, but prior to that, they had, we had to go to county, and prior to that, we had to come to you with a petition even to start the process. So what we're talking about doing is removing that first petition sent by council and putting it on administrative on the staff to do, to help, to hopefully speed these things up. That's all this is.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Richard? Sounds like an idea to me.
Well, and, and in addition to this, I'd like, you know, we've kinda visited about any, any more of these things we can figure out to make more sense in the way that these things work, so, good job. I'll make the motion, we do this.
There's been a motion by Councilman Stoker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Vasquez, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Let's go to item number thirty-one, we've already covered thirty. Thirty-one, discuss and consider all City of Odessa Commissions and Board Members, including appointment, reappointment, removing, or modification, including the following.
Okay, Council, Mayor, thank you. For the Midland Odessa Urban Transit District, application was received, Phil George to be, take the place of Tim Harry. For the Odessa Development Corporation, Councilmember Cornell would like to appoint Blake Netherland to the board. Those are the two appointments, for recommendation and consideration.
Did you say for Midland Odessa Urban Transit, Phil George?
Yes, sir.
He's president of the Odessa Market for Southwest Bank, yeah.
Okay, now, he, will he be replacing or being added to?
No, he'll be replacing.
Replacing, okay.
Replacing Tim Harry.
And then, what was the second one I got behind?
Blake Netherland for ODC.
And that's a vacant position at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Wasn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay.
Good man. Jim, is there any discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
I move that we accept both of those nominations and appointees, one by one.
Well, we also have to remove Tim Harry first.
Is there a motion on the floor for that first?
I would make a motion to remove Tim Harry from that position.
Motion to remove Tim Harry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mitchell, is any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, make your motion again.
I move that we accept both new nominations to appointees.
Okay. Blake Netherland and Phil George, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stoker, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, six, agenda item thirty-two, executive session is authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one, point oh-seven-one, subsection two, consultation with attorney, the City Council may adjourn into executive session two, on matter of which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter pertaining to cyber security updates, computer network hacking, and other matters related to information technology for the City of Odessa. Two, as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one, point oh-eight-nine, deliberation regarding security devices or security audits, the City Council may adjourn into executive session to discuss security assessment or deployments related to information resource technology. Two, network security information is described in Section twenty-fifty-nine, point oh-five-five, subsection B, or, three, the deployment, comma, or specific occasions or implementation of security personnel, critical infrastructure, or security devices. Any motion to run executive session?
So moved.
Is there a motion by Council, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Mitch, which one?
E.
Second by Councilman Haney, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Moving to executive session, eight forty-four P.M.
I'll make a motion to come out of executive.
Y'all sit down and we'll get this going quickly.
I know everyone's tired. I move to come out of executive.
We've been motioning for a second.
A second.
Second Councilman Thompson, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No action was taken during executive session. Oh, by the way, out of executive session at 9:22 PM on February 25th, April 25th. No action was taken during executive session. Alright guys, we're on item number 33. Is there a motion?
Yep.
Councilman Stug, make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?